Not be with us tonight. He's under the weather, so he won't be with us, but Commissioner Merrill will be here in time.
Okay. We will now open, I call the order, the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Brian Helms, if you would please do the invocation and the pledge.
Sure. If you're so inclined, please bow your head in prayer. Dear him, Father Lord, I just want to thank you for the blessings on our nation, on our state, and on our county. Just this week, just yesterday, I was actually reminded of your blessings and how you work through your people. Lord, I'm forever thankful for your blessings on us. Lord, tonight, as we gather here as a board, Lord, I ask for your guidance and your wisdom. Lord, I ask for your guidance and your patience with us. Lord, I ask for you to allow us, as a board, to have the fortitude to do what's right, to serve the will of the people. Lord, I ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Prior to the, to moving forward with the remainder of the meeting agenda, without objection from the board, we have an informal work session to take, an item to take up first, which will be a number twenty-three dash oh eighteen, Union County Water Rates, Projects, and Revenue Discussion. Upon conclusion of this item, we will be going into the regular agenda items. If any objection to doing it in that manner? Okay. So we will now continue with the informal work session for the Union County Water Rates, Projects, and Revenue. General Manager Brian Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, Member of the Board. I certainly appreciate this opportunity. Just a few housekeeping items. You do have some regular agenda items for your consideration tonight. What I'm thinking, and obviously a sure decision, is that we'll go through sort of the first portion of the, sort of the work session type items. What we have, I'm going to do sort of a synopsis. We're going to have our financial advisor come and speak to you about, you know, how things work in a financial advisor's world. We'll have our consultant that does our rate model, STANTEC. And that's like a good opportunity, I think, to take a stop, maybe a break, if the board wants a break. Come back, do those business items that we have, which will roughly be, I think, after six o'clock. And then as soon as we're done with the business items, we'll circle back around and we'll finish the presentation on the utility, if you're inclined to do it that way. There may be folks in the audience who are here that want to see how those business items turn out. And that means they're not having to wait so long to hear an answer on that, just for you to consider. Obviously, I'll get started, and if you decide you want to continue, then we'll continue. That's certainly fine, so. All right, let me pull up here. So first, I want to say that there's been a lot of work that's been put into the presentation for tonight. Our staff spent a lot of time trying to put this together for you. Our consultants have done a lot of work, and so I really want to thank them for all the efforts that they've gone to, recognize their efforts. And I also want to manage some expectations. There's a lot of data in here. And we are human, so if there is a mistake, and there could be, just please let us know. We'll be happy to get the correct information. Hopefully, there are not any, but if there are, just let us know. We'll certainly be happy to make those corrections on that. Also, we're not asking the board to take any official or final action tonight, because there is so much information here. We really want you to absorb it, ask questions, give us some what-if scenarios that you'd like to see, so then we can bring those back and tell you what impact that has on the utility, on rates, on everything that we deal with with the utility. And then you can make some decision at a later meeting. So that would be my ask. And let's see here. Also, just want to let you know that the, one of the things that we also are dealing with is we have a time constraint with our system development fees. Every five years, we have to do a new system development fee study. We are in that window where we have to complete that. That will actually have to be completed before the new fiscal year takes effect in July. It is a lot of work that goes into that, and our consultant is, has started on it. But ultimately, what they will need is a, the capital projects to build into that plan. If, for some reason, we're not able to come to that at a fairly quick timeframe, we may have to give them, here's what we want you to do in the short term, and have that study done sometime shortly after that. Do it twice, basically. I don't want to do it that way, but obviously, they have to turn it around so we can meet our guidelines per the statutes. So I'm just making you aware that what goes into that system development fee study is your capital plan. And that's part of the discussion we're going to have tonight, as well as in the future, is what is your capital plan? So just be aware, we've got some time constraints on the system development fee study that we have to redo. And I already recognize the staff. So let's just go straight into this. The purpose is to sort of talk to you about the past, present, and the future, as far as the utility goes. Our budget, our revenues, our expenses, and the financial models. We want to get information from our advisors and our rate consultant, and then discuss the capital program. That is what we're here to talk about as far as this presentation. Just to get right into our budget. What you'll see here is our twenty-two actuals. So fifty-three million dollars were our actual expenses in twenty-two. Now, that's actually down a little bit, because we were concerned about revenues in that year. We were struggling with some of our revenues coming in low. And so we cut back some of our expenditures in order to make sure that our revenues met our expenses. So what you'll see is that was actually a little bit lower than what the original estimate was, but that's what it came in at, a little over fifty-three million dollars for expenses. In twenty-three, the budget was seventy million dollars, seventy point two. And then in twenty-four, the estimate is over seventy-two million. And those are made up of those categories: personnel, operating, capital for operating. And that means like vehicles, not capitalized in projects, but more like vehicles and things of that nature. And then your debt service. And if what you'll see there, you'll see that the debt service is going up significantly in twenty-three and twenty-four, and actually for several years past that. And that really has to do mostly with the Yadkin Project. The Yadkin Project's debt is coming on. We'll have to fund that debt. So you'll see that that number goes up to twenty, over twenty-five million, and it'll stay at twenty-five million for a number of years before it starts to decline. STANTEC will give you some more detail on that, but just so you're aware, that's what makes up our budget and our expenses. Those are the categories there and the definitions. And obviously, in your agendas, you will have this entire presentation, as well as the additional information. I'm not going to go through every single slide. Some of this is just for you to have, so you can refer back to it. But just understand that I'm not going to go through every single slide. It's just too much to go through. All right, so let's talk about revenues.
Brian, a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Is there a, is there a version of this on the computer, so the folks in the audience can receive it as well?
It is. I believe it's up on the. It's not up? What happened? No. Well, I'm glad you said that. I thought it was up. Well, let's take a break and figure out why it's not up. That's not, that's not good. It is actually out, so that someone can, they can click onto it if they're watching it. But I thank you, Mr. Chairman, because I didn't know that was not up. Okay. Everything on the screen is in your binder. And there's actually some of the stuff that may be in the binder that's not on the screen, because I'm not going through every one of them. All right. Ready now? Start. So revenues. Obviously, there's really only a couple of types of revenues that we have. Rates make up the vast majority of the revenues that we receive. The second part of it is our other revenue charges. And that would be any fees, anything to do with the TAP fees, miscellaneous fees that we receive. And then the other one that we get are called system development fees. And we really don't program those dollars until after we know what they are. We may project them, but we don't program that money until we really know what those system development fees are. So they're in arrears, is how we program them in the budget. So as you can see, actuals for twenty-twenty-two, a little over seventy-four million dollars. The budget for twenty-three was nearly eighty million, seventy-nine point eight million dollars in the budget. The board did take some action to change rates because of that. We are having a reduction in the revenues. It went down roughly about three million dollars to seventy-six point four million. And then you'll see the twenty-four estimate would have been around eighty-six million, but revised because of the rollback with the rates, it's around seventy-six million. So just be aware that the revenues have changed because of that board action. All right, so financials. And this is kind of all of this sort of weaved in together. What you'll notice there is it talks about the sort of proceeds or cash that's sort of left over. And the way our policy currently works is, any revenues that we have that are over and above our operating costs, that goes into our capital program. And that's how we fund our capital projects. And it was in twenty-twenty-two, we transferred almost thirty million dollars into our capital program budget to do those capital projects. In twenty-twenty-three, the estimate of what we were going to program for capital projects was fourteen million, a little over fourteen million. However, the revised is a little over ten million because of the reduction in the revenues that we'll see. So we'll have less money going into capital projects. And the same thing for twenty-four, originally around fourteen million, but a little over three million, almost four million in the revised twenty-twenty-four budget. So that's how our financials work. Anything that's above and beyond our expenses is programmed to capital. That's how we handle that.
And Brian, important to the discussion is that as the rate payer's rates go up, the system development fees could go down, correct? We've been told that in the past.
So rates and system development fees are actually kind of exclusive. They're not exactly the same. So here's how our system development fee works. System development fee is really based on your capital plan, as well as your maintenance of your system. In fact, that's a good segue into it, because I'm going to actually talk about system development fees. So right now, our system development fees are made up of water and sewer fees, and they add up to seventy-four hundred, if you're doing both. If you're only doing water, it's thirty-two hundred. If you're doing sewers, forty-two hundred, combined is seventy-four hundred. There's three different types of methodologies that we have to do, that I have to calculate in order to come up with what those fees are. We currently select the combined method, and I'll talk about that in just a second. But I want to point out that twenty-twenty-two actuals, you'll see that number as eleven million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. That's the most we've ever had in system development fees. In the past, they've roughly been around five million. That's a good thing. That means we've collected a lot more in system development fees than we did in the past. Part of that is due to the board actually agreeing to increase those system development fees. Previously, the board had adopted system development fees at a lower amount than they could have. They could have had a higher amount. They chose not to. They chose to select a lower amount. The board, I think it's probably been a couple of years ago, changed the system development fees. I don't have the exact time for when it was changed. When they changed that, they increased it to the level they could within that methodology. And that helped result in some additional system development fees. Not all of it, but some of it was based on that. You'll see the twenty-three estimate is a little over five, five point seven million. And then the twenty-four estimate's eight million, three. Those are based on growth projections, what we think the system will grow. That doesn't mean we know the system will grow that much. We think it'll grow that much. So be aware, those are projections. They can always change. So this is the, some of the general statutes about system development fees. I'm not going to go into the details on it, but it has a very, it has a methodology we have to follow in order to calculate those system development fees. And it's very strict guidelines for how we do it. It has to be updated every five years. You can do it sooner, but you have to do it at least every five years, and we're in that five-year timeframe. And as I said before, it's based a lot on your capital plan. And so your capital plan cannot be any less than a five-year plan, but no greater than a twenty-year horizon. Last, the one we previously did was, I believe, about a twenty-year horizon. We looked at our entire capital needs for almost twenty years, and that's what was programmed into your system development fee methodology at that time. So as I said, there are three different methodologies: the buy-in, the incremental, and the combined. Each of them have some benefits and obviously some negatives. We chose the combined method. The chairman asked a very good question about system fees going up or down. The rates that we charge our customers don't necessarily impact system development fees. Now, if you do a bunch of capital projects, then by default, your rates will go up, because you are doing more capital. So you're raising your rates to pay for more capital. So that is certainly a consequence of having more capital. But then also, having more capital in your project can make your system development fees go up, because it's really based on what's your capital plan. So the smaller amount of your capital plan, more likely, the less the system development fee is going to be. So just be aware of that. Until we know what your capital plan is going to be, we can't predict what those system developments will be, system development fees will be. Will they go up? Will they go down? Will they stay marginal? We don't know the answer to that until we know what the capital plan is.
Brian, will you give our audience a definition? You keep referring to capital. What capital is?
Absolutely. So for us, for the utility, capital is pipes in the ground, a new wastewater treatment plant, an expansion of a wastewater treatment plant, a water plant, or an expansion of a water plant. They are things that create capacity and/or maintain the system itself. So for us, it's not buying vehicles. That's not capital in your capital plan. It is what you do to the system. And replacement and renewal counts towards that, not just new. But if you're going in and you're having to replace a pipe because it's too small, or it needs to be maintained, you've got to replace it because it has some damage to it, that can be built into your capital plan as well. So it's not only expansion, it's everything related to what you do with your system. Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any more questions about system development fees? And stop me at any time you have questions, please. So again, just some business rules about how we do system development fees. I'm not going to go into those in great detail. You can certainly refer to that if you need to. So I keep talking about this capital plan and what it is that you want to do with your capital plan, and how we get to the capital plan, is we start with a master plan. There's a lot of words about planning, and that's my degree. My degree's in planning. So I love the word "planning" because that means you're thinking about the future. But that's how our capital plan is built. We look at what the system needs to operate today, and what it's going to need to operate in the future, based on what the goals and objectives are of the board. So you have to kind of weigh in on these things and be able to say, listen, I, these are areas that I want to serve. These are areas I don't want to serve. This is how I want my utility to grow or not grow. And that's all built into a master plan. And the utility is a system. And the reason that's important is, you can't plan a utility one year at a time. It takes so long from start to finish to do a project, and I'll talk about that in just a little while. But it takes five, ten years sometimes to complete a project. You can't plan it from year one. You have to literally plan that out ten, fifteen, twenty years to be prepared for when that project's ready to be built. And that's what the master plan does. It looks at all of those different capital needs, expansion needs, anything related to how the utility has to operate. It's important that the board ultimately adopt a master plan. That comes first. You say, yes, we agree with this vision and this goal of how our utility is going to operate. Our last master plan was done in two thousand and sixteen. This is obviously a new board. We're going to bring to you a new master plan in time in the very near future for you to also say what you wish to do. That then drives your capital plan. That's how we develop those projects from there. So once we've got a master plan that the board has said we want to see, where do we go from there in actually developing the capital improvement plan, the capital plan? So we take the master plan, which has population projections, level of service that you want to provide, areas that you want to see developed with utilities. We look at alternatives. How do we serve things? There's always different ways to serve projects. There isn't always just one way. You can do it multiple ways. Well, I'll put all that together, and then we come up with a capital plan for how we build and expand the utility. Components of the master, of the capital plan, again, as I said before, has to do with the master plan and how everything is worked in. You adopt a capital plan. When you adopt the capital plan, that's what goes into our rate model. So our consultant, STANTEC, has created a rate model for us. In that rate model, which is a financial roadmap for how we're able to build all the projects that you say you want to see built. And we have to determine how we're going to get there. That capital plan is adopted by you, the board, that then goes into our rate model, so that STANTEC can show us how we can pay for that over time. So what are the components of a capital improvement program? So you have water, wastewater, R and R, which is renewal and replacement. That's maintaining the system. That's what that means. And then facilities, you know, how do we handle our people, our equipment, our materials? For water, there's treatment. There's transmission and distribution. For wastewater, collection, conveyance, and treatment. And again, that's how the system operates. We, obviously, for water, we have a brand-new wastewater, a brand-new water treatment plant that is under construction, due to be open in twenty-twenty-three. And then we have transmission lines that are going through development right now. And then as far as wastewater, we have two normal wastewater treatment plants. When I say "normal," they're conventional. And then we have several package plants that we operate, that we maintain, and that makes up our wastewater system. So one of the things I talked about is timing, and I just thought it was important to be able to tell you and the public, you know, that it takes a long time from start to finish to do a project. The Yadkin Project I just mentioned, it's nineteen years in the making for that project. Most of the time, it's five-plus years. But there's always an outlier, some that do it a little bit faster, some that go slower. That's just an example. Transmission, in that same time, we've got some that went eight years, but it's normally three to five. And then distribution is very similar to that. And for wastewater, we have, again, very similar. We have a project that's going to, it's Site B, again, ten-plus years. If you decide that that's going to be built, it's going to be ten or more years before that would be built. That's longer than the normal timeframe, based on the averages there. So I've heard Commissioner Rushing talk about, Chairman Rushing, talk about this. And it's important that what we do is we provide you with the best available information that we have, so that you can make informed decisions. And estimates are, they are the bane of our existence, I will tell you that, because we're never right. The information that we give you is never one-hundred percent accurate. It's based on the best available information we have at the time that we give it to you. So take, for instance, a project that is being considered for ten years from now. Well, we really don't know exactly what all the rules and regulations that are going to be in place in ten years. We don't know all the technology that we're going to have to do in ten years. We just know that we have a need, and we're going to try to match that need in ten years. So we have consulting firms that put together a conceptual estimate for a project. Site B is a perfect example of that. Right now, that conceptual estimate is about two-hundred and seventy-five million dollars. The reality is, is that's probably going to be well over three-hundred million by the time it ever gets built, if it gets built. Because that number is so far out, it's the best available information we can give you. Now, as time goes, and we get closer to a project being built, we get better data. It goes from conceptual to planning, where we have more information, preliminary design, where we can get better information, and then ultimately, where we get construction bidding prices. But I'm telling you this because I want you to understand, it's not our intention to undersell you. We want to tell you the estimate we're aware of, but sometimes that number is just the best information we have. So we will do our best to update you over time for projects, but just be aware that they will change. And, you know, we're nine percent, eight percent inflation. Who could have guessed that that was coming? Those are things we deal with as well. The way we certainly look into our CIP is we do build escalation into our cost. Previously, we built in a three percent escalation. That was from seventeen to nineteen. We upped that to four and a half percent in twenty. So just, we do look at escalation when we're factoring these in, but even then, we can be wrong. I mean, the Consumer Price Index is significantly different than four and a half percent right now. All right. So I wanted to tell you, this is what currently is in the ten-year capital plan. We recognize that this is not going to be the capital plan that you decide to do. This is what's currently in the capital plan. If you were to keep everything that's in there today, you've got over two-hundred and seventeen million dollars for capital for water, almost four-hundred million for wastewater, and renewal is almost, is over ninety million, and so on, to over seven-hundred million dollars of capital projects from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-thirty-three. Understand, that doesn't, that's not counting twenty-twenty-two. It's not counting twenty-twenty-three. It's twenty-four. Understand, that doesn't, that's not counting 2022, it's not counting 2023, it's '24 to '33, just so you're aware, because there are projects in 2022, and there are projects in 2023 as well.
What are those projects?
I don't have those listed here, but in your folder, there is a, there are project lists.
So, for example, 12 Mile Creek, West Fork, that would be something that's underway.
That's partial years, so West Fork would not be in 2024, that would be in 2023. 12 Mile is probably a combination, because obviously you haven't started construction. Keep in mind that right now, all we're done doing is design on 12 Mile Creek, so we don't really have construction yet, so that project likely goes between years. But in your folder, there's a list, there's a project list of every single project, and sort of a little bit of a synopsis about it. And so in your leisure, if you want to look at all different projects in there, we can certainly go to that, and it'll show you that information.
Brian?
Yeah?
It's under tab five.
It's under tab five. So that will give you an idea of specific projects, the year it was planned for, and some estimated costs. All right. I would like to take this time to introduce our financial advisor, and I hope that he doesn't get upset if I mispronounce his name. Mitch Bergulio, I'm assuming that's how it's pronounced. He's a senior vice president with Davenport and Company. They are our new financial advisors that we selected. Mitch comes to us with a wealth of knowledge and experience, and I want him to sort of go through the financial analysis and the market, and how he and his group look at that and how that's compared to our financials. When they're finished, we'll then go straight into Stand Tech. They'll have their presentation on how that fits into our rate model, and then we'll go from there about whether you want to take a break or how you want to handle that. So I'm going to turn it over to Mitch at this point, see if he's available.
Mitch, obviously, but I'm just getting his.
Thanks, Mitch.
Brian? There you go.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having me this evening. Again, Mitch Bergulio with Davenport and Company. We are your new financial advisor, and in our role, we assist you all in planning for and funding capital projects appropriate for the discussion this evening. And so wanted to take a moment, leading into the projections and the financial detailed information that Sand Tech is going to provide you, to maybe take a step back and look at bigger picture from a market perspective, from a capital markets perspective. If there is a need or a desire to finance any projects under considerations, what do you need to be thinking about? What do you need to be planning for as part of that? So, starting out, just wanted to provide a quick refresher to you on where you stand with your existing water and sewer-related debt service. This is only water and sewer debt service. This isn't anything on the governmental side, nothing to do with schools, or community college, or governmental projects. This is all water and sewer. And you currently have a little over $430 million of water and sewer revenue bonds outstanding, the most recent of which was issued in 2021. And the payments on that 2021 issuance of bonds is just now starting for you all. So if you look in the graph, the light gray bars are your historical debt service, and then the green bars are your current year, fiscal year '23, and then the projected debt service. So you can see there is a pretty significant step up in debt service in fiscal year '23, and then a final step up in debt service in fiscal year '24, as all of your principal and interest payments come online related to that Series 2021 issuance. All of your revenue bonds are currently paid off by fiscal year 2051. So there are, you know, just under 30 years remaining to repay all of those water and sewer revenue bonds. I think it's important, as we talk about utility planning and utility projects, to understand the type of debt that you all have chosen to issue for utility projects. And I've referenced this, these are water and sewer revenue bonds. Well, what is a revenue bond? What does that mean for you all? Well, as a water and sewer revenue bond, the security you have offered to the folks who hold or own your revenue bonds is the revenue of the utility system. There is no mortgage on the utility system. There's not a mortgage on the new water treatment plant. The only security that the people who own your water and sewer revenue bonds have is that you all have promised to set rates and charges and operate the system in a manner that will provide enough revenue for you to repay them the principal and interest that they are owed. So that is a revenue bond structure, and that is what you all have outstanding. In order to implement that structure, you all have entered into a contract with bondholders that's called a general trust indenture. And as part of that general trust indenture, you all have made certain promises and contractual agreements to maintain and operate the level, operate the system at certain levels that provided the people who bought your revenue bonds comfort, that you would have the ability to repay their principal and interest when that becomes due. And so there's two key, really, two real key components to that, those agreements that you all have entered into. The first is the rate-setting requirements. And what that basically says is for every dollar that you owe your revenue bondholders, you will operate the system such that you have a dollar and 20 cents at a minimum available to pay them. So there's inherently built-in a cushion there, so should something bad happen throughout the year, there's a 20% cushion that you have, that you'll still be able to pay back the principal and interest owed to those bondholders. The second piece of that, that you've agreed to, is that you will not issue any additional bonds or any additional revenue bond financings in the future unless you can demonstrate that you will be able to meet those minimum operating requirements, like the 120% of annual payments. If you can't demonstrate that, then you will not be able to issue revenue bonds in the future. So I just thought that was important to understand. What you've done already is issued the $430 million of revenue bonds and have entered into these contractual agreements that will govern your bonds outstanding until all of the existing bonds are paid off, or the existing bondholders agree to change any terms and In addition to the bond, current bondholders, if you all are considering financings in the future, one of the key things that will drive the interest rates are your credit ratings. And this is very similar to our personal finances. If we're going for a mortgage or a car loan, the banks who are offering that to us will pull our credit score. Well, in the municipal financing world, a credit rating is the county's credit score, so to speak. And you all have two different types of credit ratings. You have your county rating, which is the rating on your general obligation bonds. That is what we typically refer to as the county's credit rating. And that is a AAA from Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch. Those are the three most common national rating agencies. So you all are at the top of the charts. You can see in the gold is the county credit rating. You can't go higher than that. You're at the best you can be on the county side. The water and sewer bonds are rated separately than from the county. And those water and sewer bonds are rated AA2 by Moody's, which is two steps away from the highest, where you are at for your general obligation bonds. Standard and Poor's is a AA+, one step below that AAA level. And then Fitch Ratings has you at a AA, so two steps below that AAA level. All very good credit ratings, and that means you all have access to the capital markets. Typically, and historically, the general obligation bond ratings are 100% separate and apart from the water and sewer revenue bond credit ratings. Those are two different systems and two different ratings entirely. I would want to point out for you that this past November, Moody's came out with a new rating agency, rating methodology. And for their issuer, or the county's level credit rating, they are now also factoring in the financials of the utility system into that rating process. So whereas previously, any decisions made on the utility system would not necessarily impact the general obligation credit, now for Moody's, not the other two, but now at least for Moody's, the finances of the utility system do play into the county's overall credit rating going forward. The county has been rated under this new methodology, and you still are rated a AAA. So under that AAA, they've already factored in all of the existing debt and the existing financials of the utility system. Just for a little bit of perspective, how does your AA utility bond rating stack up? Well, if you look at the left-hand side of the slide, the first grouping there is national credit ratings. And so you can see nationally, water and sewer systems, so this doesn't include water-only, sewer-only, or folks with electric and gas utilities like the city. This is only water and sewer ratings. There are 189 systems rated AA nationally. That's about 2/3, about 66% of all utilities nationally are rated AA. And then about 30% are rated below that at single A. So when we look at all, you know, the AAA, AA, and single A-rated utilities, about 2/3 are in your category, and about 30% are one step below. Little different distribution as you kind of go down to the next level in North Carolina, where 80% of utility systems, water and sewer, are rated AA in North Carolina, and less than 10% are rated in that single A category. So just with the local government commission and general operating practices and the way our laws are set up in the state of North Carolina, tends to produce higher-rated cities, counties, and systems than does nationally. You can see on the right-hand side, the listing of the rated systems in North Carolina, and we have included some systems that are not rated by Moody's. So that's why there's a few more in the chart than are listed in the pie chart on the left. So what does this credit rating really mean for us going forward? And this is where it becomes important to think about for the planning process. What does the credit rating mean in terms of our interest rates and ultimately impacts to rates and charges on the system going forward? We thought it would be interesting to give you all that perspective by looking back at the 2021 revenue bonds as if we were issuing those in the current market. So if we were issuing these revenue bonds today, the TIC rate, which is the average interest rate, would be about a 4.4% at our current rating, so at that AA rating. If we were to be maintaining the system at a lower rating, so a full step below where we are today, and we went to the middle of the single A category at an A2 rating, that TIC rate in the current market would be about a 4.57%. So that's about overall 0.18% difference in the overall interest rate. And on those 2021 revenue bonds, that would have equated to a little over $14.5 million in interest over the life of the bonds, or about $500,000 difference in annual payment on those bonds. Historically, we've operated at a little bit higher differential between a AA and a single A. Historically, it's been more around a quarter of a percent differential, but in today's market, it's a little bit less than that. But I think that puts it into a little bit of perspective for you as you think about the planning going forward. If there's a chance that you are operating at a lower credit rating level, may need to build in some higher interest costs associated with that into the planning model that Sand Tech is working on for you. How do the credit rating agencies go about it? What goes into a rating, and what do you all need to be aware of as you're working on your updated financial forecast and capital plan? There's four key areas, and I'm going to use, this is Moody's methodology that I'm using. Each of the others have their own methodology. I think this is, has the fewest categories to talk through, so it makes it a little easier. But at a high level, 30% of the rating is based upon system characteristics. This is the condition of your system, is your system a new system or is it an old system? The service area demographics, and in particular, they talk about wealth and income levels, and then the size of the system. Is it a large system or is it a small system? Larger systems can generally have better economies of scale and can manage fluctuations a little easier. That 30% of the rating is not something that you all have immediate control over as part of this upcoming budget, right? You can put policies in place, you can plan to maintain your system, you can increase economic development and try and increase those wealth levels and grow customers, but ultimately, there's nothing you can do immediately, this budget cycle, to impact that 30%. The remainder, remaining 70%, you do have a little more control over, and that's what we suggest you consider as part of the planning process. Financial strength is 40%. So this is your annual cash flow. How much cash flow do you have compared to your annual debt service payments? That's debt service coverage, and Stand Tech's going to get into a little more detail on that for you. Days' cash on hand, essentially, what are your fund balance levels in the utility system, and how long could you operate the system if you had to, if revenue stopped coming in? And debt to operating revenues, how much debt do you have outstanding? Those are all items that you all have some level of control over in the upcoming budget process. Management, rate management, and regulatory compliance and capital planning. Well, you all are doing that. You all have been doing this as part of the planning process, and you're working on that now. From the rating agencies' perspective, they like to see a track record, historical track record of good management, good cash flow, planning for future capital projects, regulatory compliance, so no consent orders and no, you know, immediate stoppages and capacity, things like that. You are planning for the system to be able to operate and grow in the future if it chooses to do that, or if it's required to do that. And then finally, the last 10% is debt and legal provisions. There are some things within that general trust indenture that you all have promised which impact your utility bond credit rating. You do have a little bit ability to change that, but it does require consent of the bondholders. So overall, as part of the planning process that you're going to be working on with Sand Tech, the key things to be thinking about are these last three, in particular, the financial strength and the management of the system. That's going to have a direct impact on your credit rating, which ultimately has an impact on your borrowing costs and rates and charges. Page seven, you can go back and read this if you choose to in detail, but the bottom line is Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch all have published recent reports as part of the 2021 revenue bond issue. Has a lot of good information in there about how they look at things, and they do provide some prescriptive information going forward about how they will look at things and changes in the system. So, for example, both Moody's and S&amp;P referenced declines in debt service coverage, declines in your cash flow available to pay for debt service beyond current projections. So to put that in perspective, at the time, the forward-looking forecast got as low as a 1.75x annual debt service coverage. So they're looking back, that's what they're focused on, and that's the last projections that they've seen. What they're saying is if there's a decline in those coverage levels or a decline in your cash balances, that could lead to negative impacts on the credit rating. You all, separately from the rating agencies, have chosen to adopt a series of financial policies and targets that set higher levels than the minimum levels included in that general trust indenture, those contractual agreements you've made with bondholders. That's very common, that's typical, and that's a recommended practice by GFOA to have these financial policies in place. Won't go through all these, but the two that I'd highlight for you, as Stand Tech's going to be talking about these in particular, are your debt service to be talking about these in particular, are your debt service coverage ratio. So again, how many dollars do you have available to pay for every dollar of debt service? You have adopted a policy to say, "I want to have 1.25 cents to 1.5 cents available for every dollar of debt service, principal and interest payment I have to make annually." Again, that's higher than that minimum 1.2x in your general trust indenture. And the last bullet there, in terms of your reserve targets, you have a policy that says you want to maintain 365 days of fund balance on hand in the utility system. That means that you could operate the system for a full year without any new revenue coming in. That's how the credit markets typically measure fund balance in the utility system. It's on the number of days you could operate the system without any new revenue. So, I don't want to steal SandTech's thunder, but we've looked historically and have dropped in some of SandTech's base case projections that they'll get into related to a couple of key targets. The first is this debt service coverage ratio that we talked about. Again, how many dollars do you have available to pay for every dollar of debt? And in fiscal '22, remember, you hadn't started paying back your annual payments on the 2021 revenue bonds yet. So in fiscal year '22, very healthy debt service coverage at over five times. So, for every dollar of debt service, every dollar of principal and interest you're paying, you had $5 available to pay it. 2023, that steps down to the upper end of your policy level, right around 1.5x. So $1.50 available for every dollar of debt service. And then, I'll let SandTech walk you through their projections, but that is projected to decline over time, in some cases could fall below the one times level. What does that mean? Well, if you fall below your required covenants, your required contractual agreements in that revenue bond indenture, that means that the trustee who governs that contract can come to you all and say, "You have to commission a study by your consultant, SandTech, to tell you the changes you need to make to come back into compliance with that document." They will take another year to let you implement any changes that are necessary, and then the following year, if you're not into compliance with those contracts again, they could call you in default of your revenue bonds at that point in time. So, that's really the relationship between the trustee and this debt service coverage contract that you've entered into. So SandTech will get into the projections a little bit more, but know that based upon the current projections, it is coming down significantly from where it's been historically, and in some cases could be falling below, not just the policy level, but below that minimum required level in the general trust indenture. The right-hand side of the page gives you a little bit of perspective on those credit rating peers that we looked at earlier. So, the top half of the chart is your current coverage ratio as of the fiscal '22 audit in gold, and then the light gray bars are from SandTech's projections that they'll walk you through. The light blue bars are those national water and sewer rated systems, AAA, AA, and single A. And the dark blue bars are the North Carolina AAA, AA, and single rated systems. For the North Carolina bars, we've also added these lighter blue bars that kind of show you the range of folks that fall into that. The bars themselves are the medians, so half of the data is higher and half of the data is lower. On the North Carolina, this sort of royal blue bar gives you the range. So for example, in the double As, you have somebody as low as a 150 and as high as a 475 by the way that Moody's calculates it. And what you can see is, as you come down from there, you know, as you come down from the current levels of almost five times, you do fall slightly below those medians for the national AAA and AA rated systems, kind of more in line and slightly below the single A, national and single A, North Carolina medians. So, just kind of puts it into perspective for you compared to some others. Done the similar thing for the reserve balances, or we call liquidity or fund balance, and we're graphing the days' cash on hand. You all currently are well over 600 days' cash on hand, so thinking about that, you could operate the system for almost two years without any additional revenue coming in. If that, if the projections, the base case projections are scheduled out like they have been, you would sort of maintain around that 600 days' cash on hand, which would leave you kind of right in line, if you look at the peer comparative on the right-hand side of the page, leaves you kind of right in line with those AA and in North Carolina, the single A medians on those bars. So, you all historically have operated your system very strong from a financial perspective. You have good credit ratings, you have good access to the capital markets, and, you know, going forward, if you choose to use financing as a tool as part of your capital improvement plan, these are just some things to keep in mind as part of that capital planning process. All I had to walk through this evening, but happy to answer any questions you have. I know that was a lot of information.
Anybody have questions? Richard, Brian, you have? I've got some. So, in this presentation you gave, back years ago, the Yadkin plant was $200 million in project. Then it went to $300 million from one period to the next. I mean, it was just like one month to the next, around $100 million. Then the sewer plant in Crooked Creek area was projected at $130 million, and now we're looking at over $300 million. So, what I keep hearing is, it costs less than it actually costs, takes longer to build than we think it's going to take to build. And if we decide as a board to just say, "We're going to cut 400 out of 700 million dollars in projects, and we're not going to do them, or we're going to start saving money, pay cash rather than borrowing money to do them, so that we keep a stricter financial hold on them," then what happens to these numbers then? Because I have an excellent credit rating person, and when I can't afford something, I don't buy it. And so, what we're seeing is that the things are becoming less and less affordable as we go, not more. So if we decide as a board to not do almost another billion dollars in projects, then what does that hurt our credit?
Well, so I guess, a couple things there. Certainly, understand completely, I think there's definitely policy decisions in there that you all as a board will make. From the credit rating methodology, sort of where, a couple of things where that would maybe impact, is particularly when we think about the regulatory compliance, capital planning, and management. One of the things that the rating agencies look at is, are you maintaining your system, right? So, two places. The asset condition, the remaining useful life of your system. Are you maintaining your system in good repair? And is that system in good shape to last you for a long period of time? And number two, regulatory compliance and capital planning. Are you planning for the needs of the system? You know, there's certain regulatory requirements that you have to maintain to avoid getting under consent order and be able to continue to operate your system. Are you addressing those things? And then, from a capacity standpoint, do you have the capacity to serve your existing users and provide for future users if there is a need for that? And what the rating agencies particularly care about is that you're not going to be surprised by something, that you're not going to be surprised by a $300 million plant that's required, that you haven't been planning for and you haven't been prepping for building up cash to fund. So from their perspective, that's kind of what they're focused on. Are you planning to maintain the system in good working order? And are you planning to do the future projects that you need to do to maintain the system in good working order and maintain the capacity that you need? So, I think, does that address your question? I mean, that's from the rating perspective, what they're going to care about.
And this is what we're looking at right now, is, do we want to drink from a fire hose, or do we want to drink from a water hose? And we've been drinking from a fire hose, and our citizens in the county, whether they're on the utilities or not, are asking us to drink from a water hose. And so, if we are trying to be fiscally responsible, and we're trying to do the utility projects fiscally responsible, first of all, maintain the customers that we have in a working system, that they have a system that works, that they can flush the toilet, that they can pull water from their tap and drink it and take a bath and a shower. So, I think we're handling that very well. You've said yourself, we have double, almost double the amount of reserves to be able to handle a problem two years. So, we've got that covered. What we don't have and we can't predict is, will housing go down, new housing, or will it go up? What are the facts that a lot of these things were done when the interest, or when the inflation rates were low and interest rates were low? So now we look at it and say, "Wait a minute, maybe we need to hold off on that big elephant and it's still in killing a big elephant, let's take care of a few smaller things. And let's make sure that we got what we have in the hand versus waiting 10 years to find out if we can even do a project and spending all that money and raising rates." We can raise taxes, and we can raise rates as high as we want to, if we want to, and we have the ability to do that. You talked about the income level of the citizens. Well, some areas of the county have great income levels, some of the highest in the state. Other areas of the county, which will be the same customers on the same system, don't. And we're talking about affordable housing and the effect of affordable housing. Well, if we're basing our projections on wealthy individuals being able to flush their toilet versus a single mom with two kids that has to work five extra hours a week to pay these increased utility costs and other taxes and other bills that she has to pay, you know, that's what we have to govern to, is that affordable person, all the way up to the football or baseball or basketball player living in the county. We've got some of those. So, we have to consider that, and in considering that, I don't see the benefit of going and saying, "Hey, let's borrow $400 million because we can afford it and we can raise rates on people," when we also have the system development fees, which the builders that I've talked to are willing to pay a little more to take care of that other part of it. And like our manager told us, we have $11 million in system development fees, which before, it's been $5 or $6 million a year. So, all these things go into the pie, the rating. It's not just the expenses and its income. And I would say, as long as we have the ability to raise those rates, that we don't have to, we can, but we don't have to, it's a choice. And the developers could pay less system development fees, or they could pay more, it's a choice. And, now, I appreciate the presentation because I think it hits the nail on the head, that it's the choices we make as a board as to what we continue with. Do we, does our spouse lose their job and we go out and buy a new pickup truck? It doesn't make sense. But yeah, that's kind of where we've been pushed in the last little bit, is that, "Hey, look, we might get a lower rating, we might go to a B or a Z or whatever, let's go buy something new." And I'm just not willing to do that. So in the future, when you're presenting, or, you know, same thing with SandTech, we're going to take a break, a 10-minute break, if everybody doesn't mind, before we get started in the next presentation. Is that okay, Brian?
Yes, sir. When you're done, I just had a question, a comment I wanted to make.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So, SandTech is up, and I appreciate Mitch going through that. I want to make sure that the board understands that the information we're providing you, we're not trying to back you into a corner and make you make a decision that we think you should make. This is about the decision you want to make. All we want to do is have you understand all the pieces of it. And so, we're not saying that, you know, we're Chicken Little and the sky is falling. We really don't know what's going to happen until you make decisions. And when you make decisions, then whatever the outcome will be from the rating agencies, from how the capital plan works, that's what will happen. When we know more what you want to do, we'll be able to give you a better idea of the impacts to the system, and will there possibly be any rating changes? And so, that's, I want to make sure everyone understands, this isn't about trying to make you make a decision, it's really just about information. So I didn't want you to misunderstand that.
And I would say this for the development community and the citizens who are rate payers, you know, what we're trying to find is an efficient, a cost-efficient and cost-effective and a system-effective way of doing the business that we need to do. And we're partners, all of us. If we have a plant and somebody drops a bomb on it and blows the whole thing up, we're going to raise rates. But I think everybody understands that, I think everybody would get that. But if we're raising rates just to create new customers, which we call rates to have to go up higher, and then when rates go up higher, we get more customers, so that calls rates, it doesn't make sense. It gets to a point that that doesn't make sense, and that's what we're trying to figure out, partnering with the development community, partnering with our rate payers, partnering with our economic development community. We can do these things, and we've got enough intelligence in Union County to make it work. We're just, we do want this, and thank you for showing what we're up against, and in these, beware, these programs, as we go through them, the numbers, you know, we're getting back to, you know, close to a billion dollars again, and we were there a few years ago, now we're looking at it again, we're knocking on a billion dollars again.
Yes, sir.
And that's where we're at. And I think there's not a commissioner up here that wants to see Union County in bad economic or financial shape. That's why we have AAA?
Double A plus, AAA for the county.
AAA super plus.
AAA for the county, AA for the utilities.
Double A for the utility. Yes, sir. And Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, just one thing I was going to add, is it's 100%, again, I think y'all's decision, this is a policy decision, there are about a third of the systems nationally that are operating in that single A category, which is right below you all. So, there's nothing wrong with that, and that's perfectly, that's a choice that you can choose to make, and it's part of your policies, to maintain at least a minimum single A credit rating. So, hopefully, that it didn't come across that I said, "You can't do that." I just, just putting things in perspective about what does that mean, and at the end of the day, I think we said it's about, you know, call it round numbers, around 0.2% more on your interest rate as to what that costs you.
And I don't intend that we're going to go below what we have. I think we can do this, we're all wise enough and can figure out how to keep our rating, and maybe even make it go higher by borrowing less money.
Very possible.
That's how I make my mind go.
There you go.
It's worked really good.
I know you mentioned that you want to take a break. SandTech is next, I didn't know if you wanted.
Well, what I would like to do is, it's after six.
Okay.
I'd like to do a break between SandTech's and our regular agenda, let's go ahead and do those agenda items.
Perfect.
That won't take long.
Yep.
That way, everybody can go to bed, watch the ball, whatever they're going to do tonight.
That works perfect.
So we can do that, and then we'll go back to the next presentation. So let's take 10 minutes, we'll start back at 6:20. Okay. 6:25. 6:25. I can just call for recess, right, Jason? Jason, I can just call for the recess, right? Go for it, please. Call for recess. Bye, thanks.
Back to the next.[531.16]
First item we have is resolution to lease the property to Lucas Landscape and Loan. Who's going to handle that?
Commissioners, as you're aware, at our last meeting, the terms and conditions of a proposed lease to Lucas Landscaping were discussed. That lease was sent to Lucas and they have accepted all terms of the lease but for the provision that was voted on last time regarding their inability to build a pond on the premises. Under contract principle, obviously, if you make somebody an offer and they make a counteroffer, then you can walk away. You can add anything you want to your existing lease. You can vote to accept a modification. You can vote to accept no modification and present the lease as is. That's where we are today. We have a resolution approving that lease. You can make further discussions if you want to make further amendments to the lease. That's where you are.
Okay, so the amendment they wanted was the ability to build a irrigation pond, correct?
Well, their lease specifically, Commissioner says, if you've got it, it may not have it in front of you. In their lease, if you go to page two, under section five of alterations, we had that the tenant shall not construct any berms or ponds on the property. They came back with tenants shall be allowed to install a pond for irrigation purposes. Tenant shall remove, fill in the pond, and return this portion of the premises to its original condition on the termination of this lease. That was their only change that was suggested to the lease as that. Otherwise, they accepted all terms as proposed.
So they're proposing that they will, any pond they construct for irrigation will be backfilled before we get it back?
That is correct. The question would be, is again, I think considerations would be what size pond they do? I mean, is it a farm pond? Is it a 20-acre pond? I mean, that's different on property. And what remediation measures they may do? If the board is inclined to allow them to do that, I think it bears some discussion. Even if you vote to amend the lease to allow them to do that, that there'll be some discussion about what remediation measures ought to be taken.
Mr. Blong, what happens if they incur bankruptcy or something like that and basically walk away?
Well, the lease would terminate, obviously, because if they abandon the property, the lease terminates on its own right. But if they were to go bankrupt and everything of that nature, obviously, you wouldn't have anybody there to make that remediation. There's no bond. It's like any other tenant.
Well, the irrigation pond, I'm fine with. I don't think, as long as they have to return it in the condition that they found it after the lease is up, I'm fine with that. Any other commissioners have a problem with that part?
No, I would say that, I mean, I think we have to understand the nature of the business that's going on there. You know, when you have an agricultural-type lease like that, water's going to be necessary for the crops. So I think it's understandable their request, and I'm inclined to support it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
At the last meeting, I made a motion that was overlooked, and I'll make it again tonight. And the motion was not address their $3,000 a year, but do market value. And I've done some research on that, and I spent some time with the most prominent developer in the county. And he told me that raising trees, that that land would be, normal lease on it would be from $35,000 to $55,000 a year. And you've got a house on it that's worth roughly $2,000 a year. So I think, you know, if you look at a 10-year value, that's giving away almost a half a million dollars of county funds and resources. So again, my motion is that we use market value for setting the rate. If you want to lease this, then use market value instead of $3,000.
All right, Commissioner Richard Helms has made a motion. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Three to one. Okay, next, we have the lease. And I will make the motion that we accept the lease as requested by Lucas Landscaping. Any problems, Richard?
No, are y'all going to put the resolution up? Because you need to vote on the resolution as it's stated.
Okay. Keith, if you'd like to read the motion.
Okay. The motion will be that whereas pursuant to North Carolina general statutes, I-168-272, Union County may lease or rent property owned by the county for such terms and upon such conditions as the Union County Board of Commissioners, the board may determine. Whereas pursuant to North Carolina general statute 168-272, the board has determined that the property set forth in Exhibit A of the lease will not be needed by the county for the term of the lease. Whereas Lucas Lawn and Landscape Incorporated has accepted the county's offer, as amended, to lease the property consisting of 87.3 acres described in deed book 8606 at page 155, Union County Registry. Whereas Lucas Lawn and Landscaping Incorporated has accepted the terms of the lease, as amended, presented to them by the county with the exception of the prohibition on building a pond thereon. Whereas the board has this day voted to amend the lease to allow the tenant to construct a pond on the subject property. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Union County Board of Commissioners that the county manager is authorized to execute the lease, as amended, and any other such documentations as may be required to effectuate said lease by and between Union County and Lucas Lawn and Landscaping Incorporated. Said lease to begin January 17, 2023, and then 119 months thereafter on December 17, 2032, at an annual rental of $3,000 per year. This is the 17th day of January 2023.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All opposed. Three to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the rezoning case number 2022-005, Stone Bridge Unplanned.
Mr. Chairman? Board? If you'll recall, this item came before you for a public hearing at your last meeting back in January the 3rd, I believe. And this was for a 40-unit development just north of the existing Stone Bridge subdivision. You can see this is a conditional rezoning request. There's a handful of conditions associated with it. Have to be in general compliance with the conceptual plan. They're asking for five-year vesting of development rights, stormwater detention, development meet the requirements of the UDO, and that they decommission the manufactured home park that's currently on the site, and that they give a minimum 90-day notice to vacate the existing residents that are in the mobile home park. This is the general layout that's been submitted. The original, I will note that the original layout when this started was a 50-unit subdivision. They did reduce that density down, 10 lots down to 40 units. That did bring it into consistency with the adopted comprehensive plan that calls for one unit per acre in that general area. So that's roughly one unit per acre of the 40 units.
Question. So for the benefit of the audience and those that may be watching the live stream, can you explain a little bit about the density? So you mentioned one unit per acre. So just for general information, can you go into a little bit more detail about that?
Sure. So, and I guess I'll start. A few, maybe a year ago, the board changed the UDO. It used to be a one-unit-per-acre gross density. So that included floodplains, stream buffers, things like that. The board changed that. Now it's a net density, so you take that off the top first. So you have a one-acre net density. So in general, if you have a 40-acre, 100-acre piece of parcel, you get about 100 lots. That's the easy math version. Sometimes it doesn't quite work out that way based on topography, based on the way the lot looks, based on lot dimensions. So a lot of times, it might be a little bit less than one unit per acre. This particular development, they are clustering these units, so they're not utilizing the full parcel. So a lot of this will be set aside as permanent open space if it were to be approved. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir, it does. Thank you.
Sure. So again, if this was approved, it would be subject to this. It would have to be in general conformity with this site plan. And as you can see, this does connect into the existing Stone Bridge development. Does not have any existing, or would not create any accesses to Rocky River Road besides what's already planned for the Stone Bridge development. There would be a future right-of-way stubbed out to the north in case that property ever developed in the future. This did go to the planning board. They recommended denial. Now, I will say and point out that that was based on the 50-unit subdivision. The applicant did not choose to go back to the planning board. They were fine coming forward with that recommendation of denial. And staff recommendation, based on this current site plan of being that it's one unit per acre, it is consistent with the existing comp plan, is recommended to approve. I will point out that based on, you know, this will go into a pump station, which eventually makes its way to 12 Mile Creek. We have talked to Public Works. There is not existing capacity to serve this subdivision in 12 Mile right now. And the applicant did not model the sewer system to see if that existing pump station would need to be upgraded or replaced. So we don't know that information either. This point, the public hearing was conducted. I believe you heard from staff and the applicant. I don't believe any neighbors or residents spoke in favor or against the project. So you could approve it, you could deny it. You could defer it for later action, or you could send it back to the planning board if you wanted to. We have been answering questions. And the applicant is here if you have any questions for them as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think I brought it up last time, and I've visited this property. And when it says eight units of affordable housing, that is being generous. And my understanding is what they're trying to build doesn't even affect those people, but yet they're going to be removed from the property.
Right, I believe the existing manufactured homes are kind of in this area with the property over here.
And Hung, 12 Mile doesn't have capacity, so we're looking at years away to being able to have capacity to provide for these houses. Is that correct?
We are currently in design for the next expansion, but it would be several years before that's completed if the board chooses to go forward with it.
So we're talking about displacing eight low-cost housing, eight people. It'll put a hardship on them. I think we should defer this until there's sewer permits available and then revisit it.
If, okay, so if we deny it, they've got to, they can come back next year, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. If you deny it.
Or the following year, whenever sewer capacity becomes available. And there's still not a pump station, complete understanding of the pump station requirements there either, correct?
Correct.
Commissioner Helms, would you like to make the motion to just deny it at this point?
That would be very acceptable, yes.
Any other discussion on that?
Yeah, I would just say that I'm inclined to be in support of that. I have the same concerns that Commissioner Richard Helms does regarding the eight units of affordable housing and also the sewer allocation. So I would be in support of denial at this point.
Any other discussion comments? All right, all those in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. All right, next, we go back to our presentation. This is from SandTech, I think.
Yes, sir. SandTech is doing this via conference call, so they are online. They've been here the whole time. So Mr. Burnham, Andrew Burnham, whom several of you have seen before in person and on video, he will be doing the presentation. And while he is talking, I will be hitting the down button on the PowerPoint so that the screen, well, the slides get moved forward. So Andy and Debra, both from SandTech are online, so go ahead, Andy.
All right, Hung, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine.
Excellent. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, for having me this evening. I've got just about maybe 15 minutes of information to share with you and some ensuing dialogue to participate in if you so choose. So Hung, on slide two, it kind of starts with the first topic I had, which was just for making sure the board had a good understanding of the rate model that's been referenced a couple of times already in this discussion this evening. It's been put in place for the water and sewer utility. So on slide three, you'll see there, there's a schematic that, you know, explains what is the rate model. And the FAMs rate model is the Financial Analysis and Management System that's been set up and customized for the county's water and sewer utility. And it leverages information from your audits that are obviously backward-looking, as well as your present budgets, both operating and capital, and does some of those financial planning and forecasting. And so FAMs gives us the flexibility to look at a lot of different scenarios and what-ifs, different alternatives, and being able to provide the results in a way that hopefully we can understand them visually and also understand their implications, not just to rates, as the chairman had mentioned, but also to, you know, what are the impacts to some of those key policies that the board has relative to cash on hand, as well as debt service coverage, that are very important to maintain and preserve our credit rating as we look at all those different scenarios. So if you move to slide four, in this year's 2023 model update, you know, we've again refreshed many of the inputs with your 2022 audited financial statements, brought in some additional detail on prior year revenues, as well as your current budgets and future budgets, factored in adjustments to our operating cost escalation factors to account for recent inflation trends, and also brought in the current CIP, which is obviously something that we need to have a better understanding of and can certainly look at scenarios on. And the process that we go through each year is really taking into account those most current model inputs, is really truing up what's actually happened versus forecast. And so we'll look at actual revenues and expenses, trends in customer demands, as well as growth projections. We'll integrate any updated capital and operating budgets. And all this is to allow us to then be able to run through the model and evaluate the adequacy of our rates to meet our projected requirements and performance targets under a variety of different stress tests or scenarios. And those key performance targets, we see on slide five, relative to debt service coverage, pick up on a lot of what your financial advisor was talking about in terms of making sure that the model is set up to evaluate all of our scenarios with an understanding of what our debt service coverage results are for each of those scenarios. And so as your financial advisor, very, you know, well-explained, when we look at your annual gross revenues less operating expenses, those net revenues available for debt service have to exceed those debt service amounts, those principal and interest payments by a certain factor or ratio. And so within the model, you know, we look at three different tests, looking at just your senior lien debt by itself or your revenue bonds. And we look at your minimum level of coverage consistent with your trust and denture. But then we also look at target levels consistent with your financial policies and past presentations to the rating agencies. And then we also look at test for total debt, which the rating agencies like to look at in test two. And then we also look at our additional bonds test in years that we look at potential additional borrowing for capital projects to make sure that we can meet those test requirements as well. And in the FAMs model, we have used conditional formatting so that we can see if any scenario that we run is going to fall below our minimum requirements. We'll see our debt service coverage ratios turn red. Or if they're going to be above the minimum but less than our target levels, you'll see them turn yellow as part of the process. And so it's really helpful for us as we evaluate scenarios with staff and also your direction that we can actually see what we're doing pretty quickly relative to those coverage ratios for each of those different options. Additionally, on slide number six, you'll see we also have the similar ability to look at the impacts to our reserves over each year of the forecast period. And as part of that process, we've again started with your financial policy of 365 days of operations and maintenance expenses plus depreciation. And so in the table in the middle of the slide, you can see each year of the forecast period what the component of your reserve would need to account for, the 365 days of operations and maintenance expenses plus your one year of depreciation expenses. And you can see that depreciation expense is expected to increase in '24 associated with the completion of the added plant and having to start booking that depreciation going into the future. And so as we look at different scenarios, you'll see that bottom chart, the FAMs example, for any scenario that we run, we'll be able to see our end-of-year fund balances in comparison to our target amount in each year over the forecast period. And as we look at our reserve policies, it is important to keep in mind how they relate to the rating agency criteria. So if we move to slide number seven, when we think about the rating agencies, and Mitch alluded to this a little while ago, you know, they're really looking at your operating reserves in terms of how many days of cash operating expenses they can cover. And so what that means is taking your reserve policy, that's 365 days of cash plus one years of depreciation, and kind of converting at it or looking at that all on just as a number of days of actual cash operating expenses for the system. And so the bottom table, you can see the very last row takes the county's current policy and converts it to a number of days of just cash operating expenses, which is 538 days. You know, additionally, in addition to the rating agencies, there's also industry guidelines, which is the American Waterworks Association, that, you know, provide different components to consider in establishing reserves that we've also looked at at a high level to just again confirm that your level of reserves from your policy perspective are in keeping with those industry guidelines for water utilities from the American Waterworks Association. And as was reference to the rating agencies on slide nine, excuse me, slide eight, do show and do present median reports of their credit ratings for the different utilities that they maintain so that they can then see what's on average for each of the different ratings, how many days cash on hand and debt coverage ratios that each of their different types of credits maintain across their entire portfolios. And again, you can see that Union County, based on 2022 data, is certainly above the median reports for the double-A systems with about 700 days of cash and a debt coverage ratio above five for 2022. Keeping in mind that, you know, we have appropriated some cash for upcoming capital needs that we'll talk about here in a moment, and also that we did have some capitalized interest that really drove up our coverage ratio in 2022. We'll be seeing that come down over the next couple of years as we start paying the full principal and interest from those 2021 bonds. So with that as a bit of a backup, I'd like to go to slide nine and really kind of give the full board just a bit of a refresher about the past rate plan that was reviewed and some updates that have happened since then. So on slide 10, you know, identified in about eight different bullets some of the key assumptions that were inherent in the previously adopted rate plan that we looked at last year. First, there was a planned 2.5% rate increase in fiscal year 2022 that was actually not implemented. And so there was a small revenue loss in '22, and then an ongoing revenue impact from that in '23 and beyond that was factored into the adopted plan that we looked at last year. Additionally, as we looked at the adopted plan last year, we did notice that the '23 budget and '24 estimate were higher than prior year projections in large part due to the acute inflation impacts that we were seeing from the supply chain issues that largely stemmed since the pandemic. Additionally, in items three and four, we did include Yatkin distribution system improvement costs in '22 and '24 that were funded with state grants. We also had Site B land acquisition funded with state grants as well as part of that prior adopted rate plan. We did include the 12 Mile Creek wastewater treatment plant expansion in two phases, going from seven to seven and a half to nine MGD, as well as nine to 12 MGD, which is about $80 million in cost. And we did include an annual allowance of an additional million-dollar payment to the City of Monroe for our share of a wastewater treatment plant capacity expansion, starting in fiscal '27. We did include a future allowance for capital construction cost for a new wastewater plant through Lower Cookett Creek Site B, about $276 million. And the nature of the expansion projects that were included in the capital plan did allow us to have sustained growth in the system, about 1,300 new water accounts and 1,100 new sewer accounts throughout the forecast period. And we also assumed that because of the magnitude of the wastewater treatment plant expansion cost included, that we were looking at assuming the higher level of system development fees that were identified in the past system development fee study that were solely based on incremental method or using just the marginal cost of the expansion projects in the CIP. And so what that looked like in the rate model is on slide 11. And so just going to call out a few things in that forecast for the board's benefit. The first is that the plan did identify the need for higher near-term increases of about 7% per year from fiscal year '23 through fiscal year '27. And then it would drop to about 3% per year inflationary increases. Additionally, you'll see that the debt service coverage ratios were meeting our target levels, as well as on the additional bonds test. While we're above the minimum, we're not quite meeting our targets, but the rates would support additional bond issues necessary to support this level of capital spending. As you look at the bottom charts, you'll see in the operating fund chart, we're able to meet our reserve target in each year of the forecast period. On the revenue versus expense chart in the center of the screen, you'll see we had adequate cash flow of revenues covering expenses each year. And again, you'll see on the bottom center chart, our capital funding program did include a significant amount of debt financing, given the magnitude of the capital improvements that were included in this plan. Now, since this plan was adopted, on slide 12, there's been a few changes that have occurred. While the new rates went into effect on September 1st of 2022, and that did include the 7% increase from that first year of the five-year plan, there was also some rebalancing done to reflect the cost of service study results, where some revenue reallocation was done between water and sewer rates to reflect the cost of providing those respective services. And there were some other changes made to the rate structure based on industrial and agricultural user rates based upon that cost of service study. Subsequent to that event, on January 1st of 2023, the residential portion of that rate increase change was reversed. There weren't any changes to the other rates that were adjusted in September of 2022. So when we look at the impacts of that, it was about a $3.4 million revenue loss in '23, and then about $6.8 million loss in '24, reflecting a full-year impact in each year thereafter. Additionally, on item number three, the future rate increases were also removed. And so that means we removed the 7% increases in each of the subsequent years as well. And as you aggregate that cumulative impact of the revenue over the forecast period, it's about $260 million of revenue that was associated with those rate increases. And so based upon those changes in one through three, the current rates themselves couldn't support that previously identified capital program that I went through. And so really, we find ourselves now in a situation where I think we've all intended to take this conversation to you as really looking at direction for a revised capital plan and rate plan that's in keeping with a lot of our financial performance targets that reflect just a utilization of our resources and level of rate increases that everyone is comfortable with. And I think starting that conversation is pretty important to have an understanding of just what resources we have today for capital before we even think about future rate increases. So on slide 13, you'll see a summary table that shows our current resources available for capital. So for 2022, after our reserve targets, we have about $79 million of funds in our unrestricted cash balance and about $130 million of bond proceeds remaining. So in total, we had about $209 million of resources available for capital projects. As of 12/31, we'd spent some of those resources already on capital needs from both of those funding sources, our unrestricted funds as well as bond funds. So our remaining funds available as we enter 2023 were about $138 million in total. Now, as we entered 2022, or completed 2022, I should say, we did have prior year unspent capital appropriations, some of which were committed to coming from our unrestricted funds and some of which were designated from our bond funds. Those totaled about $213 million as compared to the $209 million of fund balance that we had available. If we look at the funds spent through 12/31 of those appropriations, you can see that was the bulk of that $71 million. So when we look at the remaining 2022 unspent capital appropriations, they totaled about $142 million. And given our remaining funds as of 12/31/22, you know, that means we really basically have funds available for those. have funds available for those prior year appropriations. Some of those are, you know, representative of the Yadkin claim improvements or other major projects that past ones have been appropriated for. But nevertheless, as we ended 2022, we did have about $209 million of funds available for projects. But just keeping in mind, we did have a very similar amount of prior year appropriations for capital projects that were identified to come from those funding sources. Now, on slide 14, in addition to what we have today, we then wanted to do a forecast of our future cash flow based upon our current rates. So this is a revenue assumption forecast based on modest growth in the near term, based upon the facilities that are in place today, but no rate increases. Similarly, a projection of system development fees that is based upon the current fees that are in place today, with growth really growing substantively through 2027, but then dropping off again based upon just current facilities only in this forecast. And then other miscellaneous revenues are generally pretty consistent at about three or four million per year. When we then look at just our outstanding debt service that we have today, and you can see that increases in '24 associated with the full debt service payment requirements for the 2021 bonds, it stays flat at 26 million a year. Then we have operating expenses at 44 million in '23 based upon the budget, and then they escalate gradually thereafter based upon inflation. And then we have reserve contributions to maintain that 365 days of operations and maintenance expenses plus one year depreciation. You can see those reserve contributions do tend to tail off after the first two years after they've been adjusted upward to account for increases in operating expenses, as well as the changes in depreciation I mentioned before. And so after you take the revenue sources each year, less those defined expenses, you can see the net cash flow available for capital and how that changes each year. So the baseline forecast would say without any rate increases, we would have about $40 million of additional funds available based upon the forecast of operating expenses and current debt requirements, and to be consistent with our current reserve policies, in addition to that $209 million of resources that we presently have in our fund balances available for projects. And so on slide 15, we then just did a comparison of, you know, what are those current resources that we have versus what was the previously adopted capital plan? And you can see it in the bar charts by year in terms of what those resources are in the green versus the adopted capital plan from before that includes those prior year appropriations. So we had an adopted capital program of almost a billion dollars, including appropriations from 2023 to 2032, and we have funding sources that will cover about a quarter of that, in round numbers, about $250 million out of that $1 billion total. And so then what we've done is just identified on slide 16, some different options. So when we take the appropriations out and just look at the new capital requirements from '23 to '32, that would be about $800 million. And if we looked at no rate increases from '24 to 2032, we could do that about $38 to $39 million of capital that we'd identified on slide 14. However, if we did a 1% annual rate increase, we could do, if we cash funded it, about $74 million of capital, which would be an additional $36 million above the baseline. And if we utilized cash and debt, you know, it could be a combination of maybe an additional $67 million. If you go at a 2% annual increase, you could see that you could cover about $115 million with cash only, and about $176 million with cash and debt. At 3%, you could see that cash only capital would be $159 million, and the cash and debt would be about $271, again leveraging those dollars. And then the 4% option would show that you could do a $208 million of additional capital with cash, or about $373 million with debt. And so this table is really intended to not be intended as recommendations, but more to help you kind of with a rule of thumb or scaling factor in terms of how the different capital funding scenarios translate to rate increases. Or said differently, how much capital could you get with each increment of a percent increase in rates that you may be wanting or open to looking at as a board? And so all this kind of brings me back to really slide 17, in that, you know, given the changes that have been made, you know, since the capital plan was adopted, the current rates just won't be able to support that same level of capital spending. And given that capital spending and the funding of that capital spending is such a major driver of rate increases, you know, this is really kind of setting up a conversation for the board where direction is definitely needed, that staff can reprioritize specific projects, and then we as an extension of your staff can run them through the financial model to show you what the different implications would be for a variety of different scenarios. And so direction's really needed on the level of capital spending that the board would like to see, you know, what's the level of comfort from the board on the use of debt financing for future capital versus cash only? And correspondingly, you know, what's the level of annual rate increases that the board is comfortable adopting? I think, you know, there's obviously some nuance to this in terms of how system development fees could play into this, depending upon the capital decisions that are made, but fundamentally, from a rates perspective, I think, you know, looking at the capital plan first is going to be certainly an important part of this, but hopefully this presentation gives you a sense of scale in terms of what's possible in certain different alternative scenarios, and we can certainly prepare as many as the board would like as part of the, you know, information and decision making process that you'll need to work through. So with that, happy to answer any questions and participate in any discussion as appropriate.
Any questions? While the rest of you are thinking, I'll ask one. The system development fees were mentioned, and the system development fees are currently at $7,400 for sewer and for water. To build a home on a well and septic tank could be well over $10,000 to add a water filtration system. If your well has arsenic or other contaminants, you're looking at another $5,000 plus. So in looking at that, and the discussions that I've had with some in the development community, they understand that the ability to pay for a higher system development fee would be beneficial to them. So to say we're going to go to $2 million, $2 million a year, and from the current five, and it's been five as long as I can remember, I was surprised to see 11, as was the interim manager last year, and then to see even an increase where if you even doubled that, you would still be paying about the amount you would for a well and septic tank and possible filtration system. So, so we do need to look at that and what the system development fees can be. The ability, in the past, developers had paid for a lot of these lines and projects that were going to the project themselves, was that's what we were told, and come to find out that, no, the county was lifting some of that burden. So in this discussion, this is where the developers become key as to what they can help us get and what they can help us do through legislation or other means, through our local legislations, through our partners in Raleigh, and our, just to help them pay for this lift. So, so I think that there would be more money to do projects, and I think that paying cash for them protects us as a system and an organization rather than trying to go deep into debt. So what do you think about the, just the fact that we were told we had to raise the rates 22% last year to cover the, and 7% per year for future years, to cover the cost of the sewer plant on Ridge Road? When we lowered the rates back or set the rates back, that took that money away, not all of it, but some of it. And what's the thought on that, is were those numbers included in any of this?
They were.
So, so they would look even better if we took that project offline?
If you roll, if you went the rates back, the rates are the issue.
Right, with rolling the rates back and not raising the rates, or raising them as a reasonable, like 1% a year or whatever.
Sure.
What we, what our citizens don't want to do is pay to build new houses, for new houses, or partially pay for new houses to be built around them.
Certainly, I understand.
Those monies are going to be collected from the home buyers. The home buyers normally would pay in the cost of the house, the cost of the water, the cost of the sewer, the cost of anything that goes along with that. So, and then that money's collected by the builder from the home buyer at the time of the sale of the home. And I think we're even pretty liberal on the fact of when they have to pay that. They don't have to pay till the home closes, is that correct?
For the permit for system development fees. So at time of the permit for the house is when they have to pay the system development fee.
So, so yeah, nothing I've seen so far surprises me or shocks me. It's just that now we have to get creative and legislatively creative, maybe, creative, and builder buy-in to their new customers, their new home buyers can help us pay for all these shiny things.
And I think too, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think part of it too comes down to do what Brian mentioned about the timeframe that's used in the system development fee for these projects. You know, it may be such that, you know, the timeframe that we consider for some of these expansion projects maybe extends a little bit longer, but it's still within a 20-year horizon that would maybe lean still towards an incremental fee method that could allow for slightly higher system development fees that could be part of the solution if the projects are, you know, slightly delayed a little bit perhaps beyond what was in the previously adopted capital plan. And secondarily, you know, to the extent that maybe just for those growth related projects you do consider, some debt financing for those things, you know, that would give you the ability to take some future system development fee revenues and use them to pay for that portion of the debt service. So there might be a couple of options there to pursue as you kind of continue to look at your options.
And again, it's not, it's about drinking from the garden hose than drinking from the fire hose. And I think that would satisfy our residents. I think that would satisfy the concerns we have in financing, and, you know, Union County will continue to grow. And this is, this is separate and apart pretty much from anything that the city of Monroe does, which they have six or 7,000 homes.
That's correct.
Planned with the sewer that they have right now.
Yes.
And so, you know, it's like everybody's worried that Union County's not going to grow any, you know, we've got in the pipeline probably five, 6,000 homes at least with nothing, with doing nothing that we could build that we've got in the permitted and pending phase. And the pending, that's, that number's about a one and a half million gallons, and then that's without the upgrade. And then we have city of Monroe with five or 6,000 houses, or six or 7,000 houses in their projects. I think Wingate has some projects, and even Marshall has the potential for doing some projects in the future. So, so a lot of people are concerned about that we're going to shut off growth, and I don't think that's the intention at all. We're going to have growth, it's just, do you have to have it all at once, all over the place, or can it be directed? The quickest option we have to get houses built, if that's our concern, is 12 Mile Creek. And yet, you know, that, that seems to be put on the back burner for Crooked Creek. And maybe, you know, that's, that's, you know, that's something we need to look at with the development community and say, you know, do we work with the bird we've got in our hand? Do we work with the dream, or do we work with the reality? The dream is a sewer plant up north, it always has been. The reality is a plant that's half, using half, half the capacity at 12 Mile Creek that it will be, it is permitted to be, to be built out to. So the 80, there was $80 million in here for the expansion of 12 Mile Creek to 12 million gallons.
That's correct.
Well, if we only expand it to nine million gallons, and we delay the timing of the expansion to 12 million gallons, which is two, you know, that would be a couple more times what the expansion we got planned is, that just makes sense. We got, you can build thousand, you know, 280 gallons per house divided by the number. 1.5 million gallons capacity divided by 280, that gives you a number of houses that can be built. As far as economic development and businesses, you know, we've done that study, we've looked at that, a huge business that only has a restroom, and it hires a lot of people, uses about the same as a house or two. Some could use more, some can use a million gallons a day. But depending on what kind of industries we're talking about, you could be looking at less than 10 houses can put in a massive size industry. And so, no, I'm, you know, this, this plan is this has been a good presentation. It tells us where we're at, it tells us where we can go, and tells us what we need to look at for possible solutions to doing things a little quicker, not fire hose quick, garden hose quick.
Certainly.
Right? Thank you. Any other comments from the board members? All right.
Well, I'll continue if you're all right with that, with the capital side of it. So as, Andy, thank you very much, really appreciate that, and your team, and again to Mitch and his presentation, just good information for the board to hear and understand. So, you know, now we're really to the part where we want to kind of focus on getting some input from you on how this affects your capital improvements program. And you saw what STANTEC put up, and, and those are, they're showing you, and I want to, I want to clarify something. STANTEC said 39 million in available cash. That's over a 10-year period. That's not 39 million today. That's, that's over a 10-year period to generate 39 million. I want to make sure everyone understands that. That wasn't what we have today for you to spend. Also, there are a number of projects that are already under construction, they're appropriated, so obviously, we would want to finish those projects. Those are things that we would talk to you about completing, and those are going to have their cost associated. But we'll talk about all of those in the subsequent slides on there. So go back to the capital improvement plan. The major driver of your capital improvement plan is capital. You know, what are your projects that you want to do? What, you know, water and sewer, and that drives your rates and then, and the cost of investment. Also, you're, as STANTEC pointed out, that rate model is a financial roadmap. It is how you afford to pay for whatever you decide, whether it's some capital, whether it's a lot, or whether there's none, there's still, you still have to pay for the operation, you still have to pay for the maintenance, you still have to pay to operate your, your facilities. And that model is there to help us see, are we meeting all of the requirements in order to still stay in line with our bond covenants? And so that, that's, that's important. Revenues obviously change our ability to, to add projects or not add products, and your rate decisions are a part of that. And so ultimately, you're going to have to make decisions on what projects we do and complete, what ones we delay, and what, which ones we stop. So these are the sort of the, I'll go through different summaries of this, but we have capital projects in various stages. We have some that are in construction, as I mentioned. We have some that are in design. So engineering is going through the process of designing those, and then we have some that are planning, and then some that are just not started. They're anticipated, but they're not started at all. And keep in mind, this is a 10-year plan, so that's why some of it is not started, and some of it's kind of all in between. And then they're organized by category. So we organize them by water, wastewater, R and R, renewal replacement, facilities, and master planning, and so we'll show them to you that way. Let's talk about R and R. I do want to focus on that. So that's really keeping the lights on. That's making sure your utility is operating and running without any true expansion to capacity. That's making sure that it runs and it continues to operate. So those are things that we build into our system every single year. We have a set of R and R projects that we do. We typically try to fund that annually, and then take that amount of, those amount of funds and determine what projects we can do within that year and what projects we can't. We may have to push some out, or may have to actually wait, so we generate enough revenue to do those R and R projects.
Brian, real quickly, if that, can that money be placed in a separate jar so that the people that are paying the current bills understand that that money is to repair and replace current system?
We, we single that money out to show you that. It's not in a separate account, it's not in a separate.
But it's in a, it's in a place.
But it is shown separately on how we operate the system.
And board policy could be that that money stays there.
Absolutely.
And, and that we don't touch it.
Absolutely.
Unless we're using it for a replacement or repair.
And, and it's your decision if you wish to move those funds to any other project.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Again, so R and R is important, and we, we single that out because I want you to understand that we want to focus on making sure the utility continues to operate efficiently and effectively. So, you know, how do we get to paying for all of these capital projects? There's really three methods. There's cash, we just cash fund it. We cash and debt fund some projects, and then some, they're completely 100% debt. And some of that debt is current, and some of that debt is intended to be in the future. We anticipated we would issue debt because the rate model was looking at your capital plan that was adopted at the time, not today, but what was adopted at the time, and said, we can't do a certain project with current debt. We're going to have to issue new debt to do that project. And so what we'll get into is that there are some projects that were. And so what we'll get into is that there are some projects that were anticipated that you had to pay for with future debt. And, and so we'll have to say, well, okay, we're not going to use future, future debt to pay for it. If we're not, then how do we pay for it? Or do we pay for it? Do we not do it at all? Those are decisions we'll have to get into. Also, one of the things that our strategy for how we handle debt or our bonds is first and foremost, if we have fronted cash to pay for a project, oftentimes, we may start engineering. We may start some of the soft cost on a project. But we anticipate that the debt is going to pay for all of that. When we do issue the bonds, we pay ourselves back. So we're collecting that money back. It goes back into the pot where it can be spent on other stuff. But it had to go out of the pot first before we could reimburse ourselves. We always reimburse ourselves cash as soon as we get capital projects for debt on hand, and we intend on paying debt for that. First. Second, we use bond proceeds to build the project and complete the project if it was identified for bond proceeds. And third, if the project costs more than the bond proceeds, and you've seen that, that happens sometimes, then we have to pay for what's left over with cash. So if it's a $5 million project and we only got $4 million in bonds, we got to come up with $1 million in cash we have to pay for. So those are the, the three sort of strategies for how we handle projects.
And Brian, just for the sake of the public, you know, a lot of people associate bonds with their taxes and with schools and libraries and sheriff's department. This is not something that the people vote on at all.
That is correct. I'm glad you pointed that out, Mr. Chairman. These are revenue bonds, and our, our financial advisor mentioned that earlier. This has nothing to do with the taxpayers. This is about what, this is about how you leverage your rates to pay for this debt. Your rates for the utility. So your customers are the ones who are having to pay whatever that rate is to cover that debt. So very good point.
And, and we could not, can we or can we not call for a vote on that debt?
No, sir. That is, the revenue bonds are not voted on by the public and you cannot call for that.
So whether the ratepayers would want to or not, they, they cannot, we can't put a 400 million or $300 million bond on for county-wide water.
Now, now, if you want public input, you can always ask for public input on anything.
Right, but we don't have a vote.
But this is that those revenue bonds are not voted on by the public. They are based on your ability to issue those revenue bonds.
Right. And it's not, and it's not backed by the taxpayers.
It's not backed by the taxpayers.
It could be if we defaulted on everything.
It, it could. Generally, what would happen, well, generally what would happen is, and I'm, and I'm just going to, you know, speculate here, that if for some reason a utility faulted, defaulted on its bond payments, then likely what would happen is you would be told to raise your rates in order to pay for it. You wouldn't be told to go get your money out of the taxes. You'd raise your rates to cover that because that's what it was intended for. That's likely what would happen.
But it wouldn't matter if those rates tripled. You'd have to do whatever.
That is correct. If, if, if in fact it came to that, no, of course. That's, that's a speculation.
Yeah.
So some things that we want you to think about when we're making these decisions, these are some recommendations we would ask you to consider when we're making these decisions. First, we recommend that projects that are in construction continue to completion. And the reason I say that is we have a contractual arrangement for these projects. And if you were to decide, we're not going to build these projects, we're going to stop them, then there is a cost associated with stopping projects. It's not free. And so, again, because we've already appropriated the funds for these projects, we're moving forward, we're in construction, we would always recommend that you complete those. And I'll talk more about those individually, but these are recommendations we'd like you to consider. Second, projects that are in design that we're required to do. There's a couple of projects that we have to do. We have a special order of consent for one project that we are required to do at the state. It's in design. Well, it wouldn't be smart for us to say we're not going to do it when the state has said, you must do this project. Again, we would recommend that even though it's in design and it's not in construction, because it's a required project, we would complete that project as well. I'll talk about those in just a little bit as, as well. We would also recommend that R and R projects will continue to completion because again, it's about keeping the lights on and maintaining the efficiency and effectiveness of the utility. And then here's where you have a little more choices. Again, projects in design would continue through the end of design, but then they would be optional for construction. You could decide, listen, we, we just don't want to move forward with construction. We're going to shelve the project. Projects that are not in design or in construction are obviously available for reconsideration. And then project funding sources will matter as the cost of the projects exceed our available cash, because that may happen. We may have projects where we just don't have enough cash to do them. So those are all things we want you to consider when we're making these decisions in the future. So summary-wise, I think you saw the, up at, with Stan Tech, you saw the FY '22 year in cash available for me. That's not, that's a negative. We are short $4 million for 2022. And that's because all of the appropriations, as well as the fact that we had a, a rate decrease, it yielded us in having less cash than what we needed to finish those projects. So we are actually deficient $4 million to finish the projects in 2022. What we have available in net cash for capital for 2023 is $6 million. Again, that's based on projects that are in construction, projects that are moving forward. That's what roughly the cash we have available. And then we have some potential cash which are appropriated, but you might say, listen, we don't want to move forward with that. It's in design. Let's stop it. Let's not move forward with construction. It's not started. It's planned. Let's not build that. So that's roughly $14 million in, in appropriated projects. And then we have our R and R annualized program, which is about $5.6 million that we, we recommend we continue to fund, which leaves you cash for essentially this year of a little over $10 million, $10.5 million. Now, that's in our system. That doesn't mean we don't have other sources of cash. Keep in mind that we do have some grant funds. And well, we will get those grant funds hopefully. So the state has set aside $35 million for a Yadkin project that, again, if that comes to fruition, that would pay for that project, roughly 35 million. We have another $8 million that the, the state has indicated that would help us cover the cost of the purchase of Site B and potentially some other project that we have submitted, which is the Grassy Branch Consent Order project. That could cover that if the state agrees to that. And then we have an additional $1.75 million that was given to us by the state, which doesn't really have, I don't think it has a lot of strings attached to it as far as requirements, but it's, but it's possible funds for us to use for the utility. Keep in mind, all of those dollars have a timeframe that we have to meet. 2026, they have to be spent. We're in 2023. So we have to be able to plan them, design them, build them and complete them by 2026. And that's not easy to do. So there's only a handful of projects we really can fit those in. And we also have to meet all of the guidelines that the state and the federal government has for how we procure those projects, whether it's design or construction. You have to follow their specific guidelines for that. But those are opportunities that we have. And then the other opportunity is the $10 million in federal ARPA funds that we could repurpose for a project for the utility. That's the, that's, was it 43 million total? Roughly 43 million that we got as, as, as here's your allocation from the federal government?
Forty-six and a half.
Was it 46? Yeah, whatever the number is, that is money that is from that pot that you could repurpose for that, any project.
Now, while you're there, let me just quickly ask you. The 12 Mile Creek sewer plant expansion that's in design right now.
That's correct.
Is this $10 million exclusive? Is that separated from this $10 million? Or is that we can use this $10 million to, it's roughly 30 million, I think that we have?
It's actually, the more recent estimates is it's over 40 million. Unfortunately, that's how things, but it's over 40 million now.
So $40 million.
Yes, sir.
Is that included or in this 10 million or, or already paid for? And we have $10 million more. Because in the presentation, we had $80 million for expansion of that plant.
Again, that, that, that was, that money was not that we have the money. It was we programmed that we would spend that much money. And how would we pay for it is how the rate model works. It wasn't that we had $80 million in cash. It was that we used that money to say, this is what we're going to pay for, and we were going to have to bond fund it.
Right.
Absolutely. That $10 million could be used towards that project, but then that just makes it 30 million now instead of 40. So you got to come up with the other 30 million for it.
So we still have to come up with the money. That money is, as I said, so if we go up on our rates, like in one year of going up on system development fees, we went from $5 million.
Eleven and a half, 11.6.
To eleven and a half. So now, all of a sudden, we're getting real close to a project that needs to be done and is, and is already permitted. We're just designing it and building it. And, and I see Edwin there behind you, and Edwin will be glad to know that that project will come a lot quicker than a Crooked Creek plant up north. You're looking at a two, three-year timeframe versus a 10 or 15-year timeframe, which I know that you'll be happy with, with the, the browning of Union County, I believe is how you mentioned it, and the greening of your pockets. So it'll come quicker. So you should be very satisfied with getting stuff built in Waxall in that amount of time rather than waiting 10, 15 years.
Right. Well, so the, the key to this is making sure that we have enough funds to pay for it. Because as you see, it's only $10 million this year plus whatever you have and some of those other funds. So it's, do you have enough funds to pay for it with cash? Is that the strategy of the board? We're not telling you it is or isn't your strategy. You have to decide what your strategy is. And that might be all cash. It might be some. You might say, hey, we're willing to issue some debt. That's okay. We just, we'll need to know that. So you're absolutely right. Those things can come quicker, but there's a cost and we'll have to figure out how to pay for it. I, I do want to point something out, and I am by no means advocating this. But I don't want, one thing that Commissioner, Chairman Rushen has said is that, you know, I try to be very transparent with the board and let you know all of your options. They may not necessarily be good, good options, but they're options. You have a sizable reserve, okay? That reserve is important because it actually factors into your, your bond rating. It does. It doesn't mean that you can't take money out of that reserve. I would never recommend you do that. It's not a good practice, but you can. There's nothing that prohibits you from doing that. So I don't want the board to say that I'm standing up here telling you, you can't do it. I just wouldn't recommend that you do do it. So just keep that in mind. All right. So let's talk about the detail we have for the projects. So as to how you got to the $10.5 million, I wanted to show you what we meant by some of those projects that are already funded or having to be funded. So wherever you see the parentheses, those are negatives. What you'll see with some of them is one of two things. A, we intended that we were going to have to pay for it with future bonds, and now we don't have future bonds, so we're going to have to pay for it with cash. So that's why that number's a negative. We've got to come up with cash to pay for it. Or B, where we fronted the money, we said, listen, we're going to front $1 million for this project, but we're going to pay ourselves $1 million back. Now we're not able to accommodate that. That $1 million now has to come out of the cash because we're not paying ourselves back. And that's what these are. They're a combination of those things. The, the one I want to point out is the $11.6 million for the SCADA system. That's important. That was intended to be funded with future revenue bonds. But we really can't operate our system without that. Hung made the comment, and I actually agree with it. He said, it's like driving a car without a dashboard. You can't, you know how much gas you have? You don't know what your speed is? You don't know if you have a check engine light on? You can't drive a vehicle without that. And that's what our SCADA system is. It is the, it is the computer system that manages how it operates. And we're currently in the process of updating that. So that's really not one that we can say, hey, we don't really need to spend the money on that. Well, now we have to cash fund it because we don't know that we're going to be able to issue future debt unless the board decides to issue future debt. So that's an important one. You see Grassy Branch there, the, the one that's $5.7 million. That's the special order of consent project. We're required to do that project. Now, if we're able to get the state to help us fund a portion of that with that eight, some of that $8 million set aside ARPA dollars, then great, we can offset some of that cost. But we still have to come up with that cash for that. So all of these are projects that are in some various stages of, they're in design, in construction, and they really should be completed. And that's how we get to the $10.5 million in available cash. Any questions about that particular slide? Okay. So here, here's today what the capital improvement plan summary is. We got 20 projects in construction, 30 in design, seven in planning, 27 not started. That's $1.3 billion. We know you're not going to do $1.3 billion in project. We understand that. But I just wanted you to see the, the full scope of what's out there right now. So let's look at what's under construction, what we currently have under construction. And remember, one of the suggestions we have is if it's under construction, you keep doing it. Most of these are related to your 853 transmission main and your Yadkin project. There are a few other ones in there. Our Poplin pump station improvements for the wastewater treatment, your West Fork interceptor improvements. Those are things that, that, again, we recommend that you can continue in construction. And they're made up of water and wastewater. So you can see, we've got it identified there. There are the water projects that are shown. There's the wastewater projects. And then there are the R and R projects that we've also listed on page two, which make up all the R and R policy. That total is $430 million. Now, again, a good bit of that is already appropriated, or actually, probably most of it's already appropriated. So we're able to pay for that unless some of those projects' costs come in higher than what we anticipated. Then we'll have to find those excess dollars somewhere. Again, we recommend those continue as they, as they are and move forward through the process. Ones that are in design that we really should complete because they have some requirement, as I mentioned, you see Grassy Branch there, $5.7 million. The, the big one is the Yadkin distribution system. That's the one where the state actually has put aside $35 million to help us pay for that. Again, we hope that that moves forward. We get paid for it. But there is some potential cost that we may have to come up with. The project may cost more than the actual allocation from the state. And then the rest of those are, are R and R projects for another $48 million.
And Brian, just, I don't know if the rest of the board has heard this, but over the weekend on the news, I'd heard some discussion of clawing back the money from the federal government.
Yes, sir.
By the Congress. If that happens, then we start these projects. You know, we need to make sure that those monies are going to be there because we don't have these money in, in the bank. We have to replace, we have to request reimbursement.
That's a good point. They, these are all on a reimbursement basis. So we have to have $37 million to pay for this project in order to get reimbursed. Now, you know, that doesn't mean we have to spend all 37 up front. We might spend five, get reimbursed for five, spend another five. But we have to have the money to be able to get reimbursed for it. And that's, that's an important point. You can't just say, give me the money and then go start to the project. You have to have it in hand and be able to do it. We've not heard that they're going to cancel any of these. But again, the feds and the state can always do what they want to do. All right. So projects that are in design, these are ones that, again, we would recommend you finish design, but you don't necessarily have to complete. Those numbers for estimated cost is the total cost, not the design costs. Design costs are much lower than that. We're just showing you the full scope of if you constructed it, that's the estimate for the cost. You can see 12 Mile Creek expansion on there. I said it was over 40. It's $47 million for that. And again, that's not a bid price. That's the estimate. We won't know what the actual price is till we actually go out to a construction bid for it. But that's an important number. If the board wants to consider moving. If the board wants to consider moving forward with that project, we have to find a way to fund that.
So Brian, let me make sure I understood you correctly. So what we're looking at on slide thirty-three here with that forty-eight million is, that is the cost to complete those projects? That is not the design cost?
That is correct.
Do we, do we have the numbers in an upcoming slide for the, for the design cost specifically?
You do, if you will. In your, in your, your booklets, there is a eleven by seven sheet. It actually has a spreadsheet in it, and it will show the design cost and then the construction cost.
Perfect.
Tab four. There you go, tab four.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So that is available for you to look at if you have questions on that as well.
Great.
Yes.
It does not break out.
It doesn't break it out? I thought we had a tab on, I mean, a column that showed that.
No, it shows what we've actually spent and if there's a contract, what the encumbrance value.
Okay, my mistake. I thought it had the tab on there.
If it's in design and there's a contract, an amount spent and a contract encumbrance, then that is the design.
Okay.
If the board liked, we could get that number for it off.
What Amy was saying is if a project is in design, it shows what the design cost is. If it is already under construction, it doesn't separate the two. If you want that, we can get that for you. My apologies. But I know the design number is there if it's in design. That number is shown.
Right, and also, you know, before we start making these decisions, there's a couple of ways I'd like to maybe look at it. And the one way would be, give us the number of bang for the buck. I mean, if completing a sewer plant gives us bang for the buck.
Okay.
Which means more system development fees, more rate payers onto the system growth, those type of things, then I would like to know that. Or even just be able to turn it to the staff so that we're out of the middle of it. And so I'm not saying, well, I like John Smith over here and he needs sewer. So I think I'll vote for that instead of this. I think that bang for the buck, from the staff's perspective, would be an important way to handle these finding of millions of dollars. Instead of us making the decisions of, I like this, but I don't like that. Maybe that bang for the buck. You know, if we know we've got twenty million dollars, fifteen million dollars, where do we get more money from the system development fees? And from, you know, things like that. So maybe consider that in, in your discussions in staff of telling us, like if one thing's going to give us less, and it might be a project I like, but if it gives us less money to continue on and do those projects in the future, and long as it's not a three hundred million dollar investment.
I get where you're going.
You get what I'm saying.
I get where you're going. So I think what you'd like is you'd like for us to take a first stab at saying, okay, these are things we would recommend you do. And some of them may simply be that it's good for the system. Okay? This is good for the system's operations. Others may be, this is good for the growth of the system. But it's, we're giving you a recommendation based on what we think the limited dollars are and what we would say, these are things you consider. Obviously, you still have to vote on that, say yes, no. But okay, we can take a first stab of giving you that and coming back to you with that. So I have some questions on that first. Is the board willing to consider some possible future debt to pay for something? Because if your focus is cash only, that's going to significantly restrict the pot that we can use to pay for projects. If you are willing to consider some debt, then that helps us look at that in a different manner. I think Andy showed you that with some small rate increases, you can actually potentially issue some lower amounts of debt to cover things. Not saying you want to. We need to understand, are you willing to consider that? If the answer's no, we need to know that because I don't want to bring you something and you go, we're not going to do that. I need to know, are you willing to consider? Doesn't mean you're going to vote to do it. Are you willing to consider?
Well, let's look at it the way the school system has to look at it. If they want to issue debt, let's say that they save money on a, on a school project that they did with bonds and they saved money. Then how do you guys, how would you handle it on the school board if you had ten million dollars left out of a bond?
So what we have done, or what Union County Public Schools and the facilities committee has done in the past is they hold that savings in reserve, but it can only be used within that line item.
Sure.
So you can't change, you know, funding mechanisms, you know, for, like, for example, if it was, if we had savings in painting projects, then if they're, that savings would have to be reserved only for painting projects. Unless we came to the county and asked permission to transfer that over to use it for a different project.
So if you had a public works project that came in five hundred thousand under the projection, you would still have that five hundred thousand dollars and maybe that's the available money. Or the system development fee money comes in at a higher rate. And again, if it's replacement, if it's replacement and repairs, that's why it's important to know, well, hey, you know, we gained a million dollars in replacement and repairs this year. So maybe then we look at moving that money over or just not allocating so much of replacement and repairs as next year. So using those savings to help fund these projects even quicker. I'd just like to see what it would look like without going out and trying to borrow, borrow, borrow with the uncertainty.
That's important for us to understand. Is that the philosophy of the board? If it's cash only and not debt, then that's fine.
Well, growth has been on the backs of the rate payers. I mean, we all have seen that and know that. The thirty-three percent increase, and it was voted on in twenty nineteen, and then the twenty-two percent increase that was passed last year. The rate payers feel like they are being pushed upon, and they are.
Sure.
I mean, they're, they're being pushed upon to upfront this, this money. You know, the amount of money that he said we would have left over after we did the rate cut this year was about zero when, when in the scheme of things.
Yeah.
It was about break even, which was what we expected when we lowered the rate. And if we don't do the projects, then we're, we're okay. If we do the projects, then we're a million behind or something. So, or we're, you know, but with the rate decrease, we can break even. If the system development fees go up and the developers are paying more per home, instead of seventy-four hundred, they're paying twelve thousand or ten or, or, you know, or fifteen. You know, like, like a lot of people are having to pay with digging a well, putting a septic tank, and a, and a well filter system. So, so what does that number look like? What are the developers willing to pay? And what are their customers willing to pay them back for what they do? So I think when we look at it, I think that as hot as Union County real estate market is, I think everything goes along fine and they pay for the services that they require.
So again, we, we are bound by what the current methodology is for system development fees when we do our, our calculations. I, I hear exactly what you're saying and I, I agree. But that's a legislative decision. And we'll obviously need to go to the legislature. And we'll need to get their buy-in to change that and how it's calculated and how much we can charge. So we're not going to tell you what we think we can collect the system, because we have no idea. We're going to tell you what we can do based on the methodology. That's, that's all we can tell you.
And the methodology might, might get us there.
My guess is, it will be, it will be less in some respects because your capital program is going to shrink. So in some respects, I think your system development fees are actually going to go down in some places. They may stay constant in wood water. And the reason why I say that is, again, I'm making an assumption based on what I understand. You can build in there to all of the maintenance and all the cost of our new Yadkin plant. When that comes online, that can be built into your system development fee methodology and calculation. One of those three choices has that as a component. So you might actually be able to keep your water system development fee pretty close to what it is. It might go up, it might go down a little bit. Your sewer one is going to be the one that may go down because it's based on capital. What are the capital projects that you say you want to do? And if that shrinks, which I suspect is going to shrink, you really aren't going to have an easy time of keeping that fee higher. Now, the legislature may step in and say, we're okay with you increasing that. But right now, the way the methodology is, I think it's going to be difficult for you to keep that system development fee and, or even be higher for sewer. It's probably going to, it's probably going to go down some.
So we're depending on our partners in the legislature to help us with that.
Absolutely.
And the building lobby and the builders locally to help us get that.
You're going to want them to step up to the plate and say, we want this, we need this. General Assembly, help us fix this.
Melissa, you had a question?
Yeah, so while we were talking about methodologies or whatever, I just, first off, I agree with everything Commissioner Rushing, you know, has presented to you to consider with staff. But the reason I want to come back to rates is, I mean, it's very clear the rate increases are to come up with approximately three hundred million dollars for a, a future sewer plant.
Oh, that's certainly built into, absolutely.
But that should not be, so my philosophy is, is that should not be on the backs of approximately thirteen or fourteen thousand Union County citizens that got a thirty-three percent rate increase, then a twenty-two percent rate increase. I haven't seen that anywhere in the presentation tonight. Everything tonight has been talked about a seven percent rate increase. That's not completely true because thirteen or fourteen thousand citizens got a twenty-two percent rate increase.
That was the balancing, yes, ma'am.
After a thirty-three percent rate increase.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so I just want to share that I cannot support raising rates on non-sewer customers. So I, I just want to.
Certainly.
Put that back on the table.
And that's all we need to know. We need to understand the philosophy that the board has. I, I will tell you in future years, you are going to need to consider some adjustment for inflation. We can't operate at a zero percent rate increase forever.
And I completely agree with that, but not.
Not right now.
To build a three hundred million dollar sewer plant on Ridge Road.
Certainly.
If you're not a sewer customer.
I, I understand that fully and completely. And to Commissioner Merrill's point, we did not show that, but I want to make sure the public does know that, that yes, there were rate increases that water customers and water-only customers did actually have to incur. That the board changed. You rolled those back. You eliminated that rate increase from those, for those customers.
Commissioner Richam, do you have any questions or?
No, I just, one thing I find interesting, I understand, you know, the argument, rate payers paying for expansion and things like that. We need to have that discussion when it comes to schools and school bonds because there's a lot of people that don't have kids. So I guess we need to only tax people that have children under that philosophy.
That's completely unfair because that's the state statute for K-12 education. So thank you very much.
And I'd also say, Commissioner Richard Elms, that we vote on those bonds. The people vote.
The taxpayers.
Taxpayers vote on those bonds. The taxpayers have no opportunity, as we heard earlier, to vote on sewer plant bonds. So there's a difference. Commissioner Ryanham, did you have any questions?
No, I, I mean, I agree with Melissa, Commissioner Merrill's comments regarding the rate increases and the burden of that placed on rate payers in the county. I've already expressed my views regarding that. I don't agree with it. I share her belief as well. And I would say that, you know, to Commissioner Elms's point, yes, we have a legal obligation to educate children. And as we saw in the November election, the voters made their voices loud and clear regarding the bonds.
Certainly, I understand. So just to kind of, again, stop me anytime you have. Wanted to go to, for projects in design, talk about the rest of those that are in design. One of the things that.
How much longer do you think the presentation?
I can wrap this up in probably another ten, fifteen minutes.
Okay, I was going to call for a quick bathroom break.
It's up to you if you want to take a bathroom.
Is everybody good? Everybody still good to finish out? Okay, keep going.
So one of the things that we don't know that is on the horizon, we don't have any idea how much it's going to cost, is our PFAS. The, and I think we've mentioned this to you before. The federal government is looking into putting in place some treatment requirements for if you have PFAS within your water system. And we don't know the answer to that. We have no idea what that may or may not cost us. We're evaluating currently what those levels are, what we have. But we won't know what the requirements are until the feds come out with that. So always keep in mind that there are future things we have to address. We just don't know what they are. So just want to point that out. All right, it's in planning.
Can you go back one slide?
Yeah, absolutely.
The EDC industrial park wastewater at three million dollars.
Yep.
Is that the one at the airport?
That is, yes, sir. And again, the, a lot, those funds are really set aside out of the EDC. They're not necessarily coming out of the, the utility. So just because the number's there doesn't mean that's coming out of the utility. It's just showing you the number.
Right.
Those funds are actually intended to come out of the funds that were set aside from EDC.
It's my understanding that we annexed.
That's not correct.
That's wrong?
No, those were revenue bonds that were issued.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For that project. When the property was, was purchased.
My mistake.
Okay, so, and that's to, because my understanding now that we've annexed into the city of Monroe, I guess this would be for a pump station?
Patrick can give you probably more detail.
Yeah, the, the original design was for a pump station to ultimately pump to our Twelve Mile Creek plant. And going back and looking at it, it made more sense to gravity feed to Monroe's city plant. So the project now would gravity feed into the city of Monroe. We have not annexed that property into the city. But we have committed that if they were willing to provide sewer to that property, we would annex into the city.
So that industrial park will be handled by the city of Monroe. Did we just fix three million dollars or we got to pay it back?
Again, that, that doesn't mean there's cash in the system for us to pay for it.
We intend to use those dollars and.
Oh, I see you can use them.
No, for that project.
Okay.
So the city is hopefully going to pay for part of that. And we're going to use the three million. We've already spent some on design. I think we're at ninety-five percent of design.
Yes.
On that project. So that's the, the intent of that is still the same. It would be for the industrial park property that the county purchased and issued revenue bonds for.
Okay.
All right. Again, one of the things I do want to make clear is the short waterline program. And so the 2021 or the backlog program is fully funded with cash. And, and that's, that's fine. The 2022 program, however, and that shows 2023, but I want to talk about 2022, was not intended to be funded with cash. It was actually intended to be funded with future revenue bonds. So we had to, we had to flip that. We had to say, okay, we're not going to issue bonds. That's what we think we're hearing from the board. We're going to have to pay for that with cash, and that's five million. That's exactly the same thing that we're dealing with with 2023. That's five million dollars that we intended that we were going to pay for with future revenue bonds. And so in order to pay for that, we'd have to come up with cash to pay for that. Now, 2022 is awfully hard for you to go back on. We've already designed it. We've already got the, all that ready to go. That would be difficult for you to tell those customers, those potential customers, we're not going to do it. 2023, we could pull that off the shelf and say, listen, guys, we really can't move forward with this project right now because we're only in the application process right now. I just want to point that out. Those were not, that, we didn't have cash set aside. It was revenue bonds that we were going to use to pay for that. So keep that in mind. All right, so not started. All these are things that we could spend money on, but we haven't started on. Again, that doesn't mean there's cash available. There's only a finite amount of cash available. This is just showing you the full breadth of all the stuff that was contemplated that we would have to do if we were growing the utility, all these different things. And some of these are actually R and R, not just growing the utility. These are all projects that we could say, we're just not going to move forward with. And I think what you want us to do is come back and give you that list. What are we not looking forward to? What should we move forward with? And then let you decide whether you like that or don't like that. This is the laundry list of what's currently in there. And there's multiple slides on this. And as you can see, there is that Twelve Mile Creek expansion from nine to twelve. Just because we wanted you to be aware that the universe of projects originally in the ten-year plan did show that you would expand Twelve Mile to twelve million gallons. That's an estimate. It might be more than sixty million. We don't know what it is, but that's the estimate right now. So I just wanted to point that out.
Brian.
Yeah.
Well, right now, we're in the design and planning stage to go from seven and a half to nine.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Of the backlog, people already paid their permits and everything. How much of that? that one and a half million will they consume? The last time they said a million and a half gallon lasted 2023. It lasted a little over two years.
Right.
Are we, are we going to be out by the time we turn it on?
I don't think we'll be out, but to be honest, if the projects that are in consideration were to move forward, we would use a very significant percentage. I, I'm going to guess 75% of the capacity. Now, they don't all move forward, so I, I want you to understand that. Some of these projects do not move forward, but if all of them that are in the consideration were to move forward, yeah, you'd probably use 75% or more of that capacity in that timeframe. Now, how long would it take to use all that? It may take three, four, five years because projects take time to be built. A subdivision doesn't get built overnight. If it's a 300-lot subdivision, it might take five years to build out a 300 lots or more, absolutely. So it depends on the time of the project, but it is very possible that all of them approved, we've, we've consumed a good bit of that capacity. That's a very good question.
And, you know, just to, for historic information, that plant was using approximately 3 million gallons a day in 2006. Today, all these years later, it's going to be using 6 million gallons approximately a day right now.
Right.
We still have 1.5 million gallons in capacity that will be pending to, of houses to be built.
If, if the board approves the expansion.
Well, no, that's another one. It's only using 6 million gallons, it's a 7.5 million gallon plant. So today, actual use is 6 million gallons roughly, right at that.
Actual flows, but you got to keep in mind, there are permitted flows
Right.
That, that aren't connected, that we have to accommodate.
That's right, and that's the pending flows.
That's correct.
And another 1.5 million gallons is roughly 5,700 houses. So, so it's not like, you know, again, are we going to drink from a fire hose or are we going to drink from a garden hose?
Absolutely, and we're, we're not, we're just giving you the, the scope of what we're dealing with.
Brian, real, real quick, if we can circle back very quickly to the 2023 short, short line water
Yeah.
Project. Now, refresh my memory, the ARPA funds that we've got, that would be something that we could apply to that particular project, correct?
So you, as long as you can finish everything by 2026, and that's the key. I, I, I don't know that you could, am I saying you can't, but it has to be encumbered and then spent, correct, by 2026?
It has to be appropriated by the end of, by December 31st, 2024, and spent, completely spent by December 31st, 2026. The other just nuance to it would be that we would have to follow all federal procurement for that, which would be something that we have not had the experience or practice for that type of project. So we could do it, it would, we would just have to see how that worked out.
Right. There, there are federal guidelines that make it a little more complicated for you to use those funds.
But, but as I recall, at least generally speaking, that would be something where those dollars could be appropriated.
Yes, I think that that would be appropriate, where you saw the note, and Brian mentioned that there's that 10 million that was expected to be used for Yadkin, an initial part of the Yadkin project, we could reappropriate that for that $5 million project.
Repurpose that, absolutely.
So we're going to have to get creative.
Exactly.
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Again, it just shows you the universe of those in project, almost $100 million of stuff that's planned, but not necessarily built. Then not started, as I said, there's a number of not started, I'm not going to talk about all of them, but it adds up to over $600 million of not started projects. And, and you see Site B on there, you see, you know, some things that we probably won't move forward with, like the bulk water filling stations. I'm, I'm not sure whether the board's philosophy on that. If you want to, that's fine, but that was not started and planned, so those funds are just shown as a possibility for that. So again, there's just a lot of projects for us to look at and consider and give you a recommendation on. As I said earlier, there are some future regulatory things that we have to prepare for, that we just don't know are coming. Lead and copper rule, we have to do that. We don't know what the full cost will be. We anticipate it might, it's not going to be significant. We don't have a lot of lead and copper, but we won't know till we finish doing our evaluation. Same thing with PFAS, we just don't know what those costs are going to, to, to be until we know what the federal government standards are that we have to meet. So that's, that's, that's something to always keep in mind. The other thing that, that is not built into any of these numbers is if the board decides, which I believe that's where you're going, that you're not going to build the Crooked Creek lower, the Lower Crooked Creek Site B plant anytime soon, then we have to build into our cost maintaining the current Crooked Creek plant for longer than what was expected. That plant is, is very old, it is antiquated, and it's going to need a lot of love that we didn't intend on putting into it if we didn't need to. Because we know we're going to be pushing that out, we'll have to build into our cost, what does it take to rehab and refurbish that plant to run it for 15, 20, or more years, more than what we anticipated to do. So just keep that in mind. That's not shown anywhere on those lists because we didn't evaluate that. We weren't anticipating we'd have to do that, but we now have to go back and look at that. And also, there will be things that if we don't do certain projects, then that may yield some other pro, other things we have to do in order to maintain the system because we're not doing something. That goes back to you saying to us, tell us what projects you think we should do, and then if we do these, what things do we have to do because we didn't do something else? We're going to have to tell you that. We're going to have to give you that information, and you'll have to make those considerations. And what's also not shown on here is that the chairman had asked for what, what-if scenario for a, what's called the South Fork Pump Station, and I'll talk about that very briefly. We had a pump station that we had in, in operation for a period of time that has now been out of operation for a number of years. And we took it out of operation because it was really just meant to be a temporary. It wasn't meant to run permanently, not even designed to run permanently. But the, the chairman's question was, well, can that be used to help provide some potential flow in the Crooked Creek Basin? And the answer, the, the short answer is yes. The long answer is, it's really expensive. And I'll tell you why in just a second. I want to go. So if you look at this area here in, in blue, this all green area is the Crooked Creek service, sewer service area. That's everything that is served by that service area. This blue section is still part of that green, but it's only the area that can really flow by gravity to that actual South Fork Pump Station, which is right here. And so really, you can't serve most of the service area with that pump station. You can serve probably a quarter of it, but you can't serve the entire thing. You'd actually have to pump into there, and that cost, that has even more cost associated with it. The other thing to keep in mind is that when you pump here, you're actually sending it to the 12 Mile Creek plant. So it actually pumps to a gravity point, and then it runs down and flows all the way over to the wastewater treatment plant. I'm going to talk about that in just a second. That's that line that I was just highlighting, and it goes all the way down to the wastewater treatment plant. Where you see this in red, what that means is that line is already at capacity. We can't send any more flow during our normal and peak hours because we are already at capacity. In fact, we've actually stopped permitting projects to connect directly in those areas because we can't accept additional flow. So in order to fix that, it's roughly 30-plus million dollars to upsize that line, plus another several million to improve the pump station. So you're talking about roughly $40 million to make that pump station work to provide some capacity. Short answer is yes, it works. Long answer is, it's expensive. Do you really want to do it? That's fine, but we have to find money in order to pay for that. But I, I did want to bring that back because the chairman did ask that question, and we wanted to be transparent. It's possible, just do you want to do it? That's, that's the key to it.
And while we're on that, those same lines will be used with the, the tank, the equalization tank.
Equalization tank, yes, sir. That's correct.
So we're going to pump 3 million gallons already through that, just in off-hours?
Yeah, the peak, the, the off-peak hours are when we'll send additional flow. So that's the only way we can send additional flow, is during those off-peak hours.
So the cost of upsizing those lines to the existing Crooked Creek plant, what is the cost of doing that?
That's roughly $15 million. That's the Crooked Creek interceptor that you're asking about.
And so we'd pay 15, and we could upsize those lines to go to the current Crooked Creek plant. Those lines would be sized to go to an eventual plant in, in the upper Crooked Creek area.
Those lines would be sized to accommodate development potential within that Crooked Creek service area.
For the next 50 years.
Next 30, 30 years. Now, again, we'll understand, we're guessing what 30 years is going to be because we have to look at land use plans, what, because most of that's in towns. We take their land use plans, we use that, we come up with a factor for growth, we say, okay, this is what we think it will actually yield on that. Sometimes we're right, sometimes we're not, because plant, towns can change their plans.
Right.
But that's based on the current available information. So yes, sir, that's the other alternative is, do we serve a greater area, going back up to this map here? Do you serve a larger area within the service basin by actually doing this Crooked Creek interceptor? That's what this red line is here. And that red line is actually telling you that we actually cannot do projects in the Crooked Creek Basin right now because that, it's at capacity. So unless we actually build
The lines are too small.
The line is too small, that's right, cannot handle anymore. And there are about, I want to say, six projects that are dependent on whether you build this or not, obviously. If you choose not to, that's fine, but there are six projects that cannot move forward because of that, that particular upsize. And then there are obviously future projects that could happen somewhere in this basin that we don't know about right now.
Michelle, wasn't that one of the projects that could, you, we could have used that state ARPA funding for the interceptor line, or, or is that not?
I don't think so. I think it's probably too far along in design.
Well, the, the question would be, that money was for a future plant.
Oh, you mean the, the 8 million?
Yeah, the 8 million.
Yeah, I, I think the rate, the, this is my understanding, as I thought the 8 million specifically talked about a new wastewater treatment plant in the Lower Crooked Creek or the Poplin
Right.
Pump station. And that's, I think, the problem. That doesn't mean we can't ask the state to change the terminology. We can always ask.
Right, because this would be a key component to a new sewer plant. If you don't have this, you don't really necessarily
We, we could ask, and that, so it's 8 million dollars, so it's about 3.3 million dollars available
Right.
After the Site B purchase.
After the Site B purchase.
So we can, I mean, we can ask that.
That would be a good question to ask because without this, you, you don't ever get the pipe to go to eventually to a new plant. So you need this to upsize the pipe
You do.
To go to the new plant, so
I still may, we still may have some of the same ARPA, we have to look at the ARPA considerations because those are, are ARPA dollars
Yeah.
That we would be using, so we would have to look at what we would be spending and where we are in the process to make sure that
It could work.
We could make it align
Well, you're further along in this process than you are in a sewer plant.
Yeah, we
Further along actually hurts me on the ARPA side in some cases than, than other things would, but we can, well, I'm happy to look at it.
We can certainly look at that, absolutely.
Thank you.
So that, you, you make a good point, you know, that, that's always something to consider. It is, it is preparing for the future at some point in time. If a new board wants to move forward with a Lower Crooked Creek plant, it is preparing for the future. So
Real quick, does anybody else have any questions?
So that's all I had for the, there's a lot more slides there, I really just wanted to give you the crux of it. You can do it, it's not cheap, it's something that, you know, obviously you'll have to think about for the future. The, the way I intended for this to go, but I think I, I got some direction from you is, I intended for you guys to kind of talk about projects and say, well, you know, hey, take this bucket of projects and go look at that and tell us what it does for the, with the rate model and how that works and how you could fund it, you know, and that's a what-if scenario, and then you can give us another what-if scenario. What I've heard you say is what you really want us to do is give you a first pass at it. We come to you and say, these are the things we'd recommend that you do based on, and I heard y'all say, no additional rate increases for debt right now. No, no, no debt and no rate increases for debt. So whatever cash we can able to cobble together from the different sources that we have, what could we recommend that you fund with those? That's what I thought I heard you say. If I'm wrong, correct me.
I, I'd make a motion to that, that, you know, do it from that direction and come back with the answers. And I think that's what we bring before the development community when we have another update and make decisions, that they see what we're doing and they can all go home having been in the same room, hearing the same information, which I think we've not done in the past, that we need everybody hearing the same information, what's important, what our struggles are, what their contribution is, what potential contributions they could have, and, and let's go forward as a team with the rate payers, the development community, the county, and, and Union County Public Works. So I'd make that as a motion that we do direct you to come back with that, you know, project list of things that get the most bang for the buck, and let us know, and then we can make some decisions at that time.
Just for, for transparency, I doubt we can get that to you on your February 3rd meeting, that's going to take us a little time, so
How much time do you need?
I, I think we might be able to have that for you for your second meeting in February, but, you know, let us work with the team, see what we can come up with. I think we can get it for you for the second meeting. The first one would be awfully tou, it'd be tight for us to be able to get that to you by the first meeting.
Is the second meeting on Valentine's Day?
It is not.
Okay, I don't want to make all, all the spouses mad, so, so that would be the motion. Any, you clear with the motion? Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None.
Okay, that's all the information that we have today, a lot of information. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I went a few minutes over, but that's because you had questions.
Any, any questions? Would you like to just deliver interim manager comments from the, from there?
So I have no comments, so thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Fantastic. Commissioner Richard Helms? Commissioner Brian Helms?
Yeah, I'd just like to, to say thanks for all that attended the meeting tonight. Thanks for our staff for putting us in long hours, giving us updates as necessary. I, I want to encourage everybody listening from home and watching the, the live stream that, that Union County is still in good shape. So this has not been a huge surprise to at least me, and I think my fellow commissioners, what we've seen today. We're going to continue to look for creative ways to fund the projects that are necessary to, to sustain our county. So I want to, I want to assure everybody from home that that's what we're going to do, and, and I think that everyone will see that, that we are committed to Union County and making sure that we can take care of our rate payers and our taxpayers here. So thank you.
Commissioner Vice Chairman Melissa, no comments? I'd just like to echo what Commissioner Brian Helms said. We are a team in this, and that includes the, the whole community, our economic development partners, and everybody's a team in this. And we can do it, and it can be done, it's just how fast and how, how much does it cost? And with that, I'd like to say good night, and everybody have a safe trip home. Motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.